So, we will have a roll call vote. Councillor Chimes and seconded by Vice Chair Butt. Now, we will have a roll call vote. Councillor McLean.
Yes.
Councillor Dombrowski.
Aye.
Councillor Chimes.
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt.
Yes.
Councillor Santos.
Aye.
Councillor Danahue.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, so we will return after this executive session. So, welcome, Michael McLean, elected last Tuesday to replace Peter May's seat, and will be here until the April 26th election. So, welcome, Mike.
Welcome.
Yeah. So, we are going into executive session at this time. I will do so with a roll call vote. The reason for executive session is a possible settlement agreement with Collegium, because an open meeting may have detrimental effects on the bargaining position of the town with the intent of returning to open session immediately after. So, we will have a roll call vote.
Chair, can I make a motion to go into executive session?
Oh, please. Yes, you may.
So moved and seconded.
So, a motion made to go into executive session by Councillor Chimes and seconded by Vice Chair Butt. Now, we will have a roll call vote. Councillor McLean.
Yes.
Councillor Dombrowski.
Aye.
Councillor Chimes.
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt.
Yes.
Councillor Santos.
Aye.
Councillor Danahue.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, so we will return after this executive session. So, welcome back to the February 28th, 2022 Town Council Meeting. We are now out of executive session and into the open session. Before I begin, I just wanted to acknowledge what's happening in the larger world with Ukraine, and I know we have many members of our community who are directly impacted with friends and families in harm's way, and the rest of us are just watching in horror. And it's terrible and reminds us how important community is. And I believe that my colleagues here will echo that we stand with Ukraine and that we all need to stick together and support those who are being impacted by this. So, thank you for that. We're actually going to Sherry. I think we're going to postpone public engagement until 7:00, which is our normal start time, so that anybody who might want to speak. So, at 7:00, we will come back to public engagement. Because we want to make sure that we hear from people and that they're not surprised that we started earlier. So, I'm going to move on to item number 6, approval of minutes from the February 14th, 2022 Town Council Meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. So, motion made by Vice Chair Butt and seconded by Councillor Santos. Any discussion on the minutes of February 14th? No, hearing none. We can have a hand vote on this since we are all present. All those in favor of the February 14th minutes? All opposed? So, it's a vote of 7 to 0. So, we're going to bounce around a little bit here. We're actually going to go to item number 11, which is the Collegium Settlement, which was a topic that was just discussed in executive session. I'm going to pass the floor to Councillor Tom Mullen to tell us what is happening with this.
Well, Madam Chair, let me just set the stage with some context. As you know, the town of Wakefield has hired the law firm of Scott &amp; Scott to represent the town as outside attorneys in litigation against a number of opioid manufacturers, distributors, and others involved in the opioid trade. And one of the smallest of those defendants is a company called Collegium Pharmaceuticals. It recently agreed to settle all litigation by paying a lump sum of $2.75 million with the allocation among the 27 communities that are represented by Scott &amp; Scott being done by those communities and Scott &amp; Scott themselves. And the allocation was done by a damages expert retained by that firm, who looked at three factors: relative population, relative harm measured by the amount of opioid sales, and litigation risk, meaning chiefly that a bonus was awarded to Springfield because Springfield volunteered to be the bellwether case, the first case to go to trial. The result of all of this figuring is that Wakefield would get a net amount of $24,758. Now, Scott &amp; Scott recommends this settlement, and I do too for these reasons. First, yes, it's not a lot of money. But then Collegium's not much of a defendant. They only started selling opioids in 2016, so the damages that could be extracted from them are relatively small. Second, Scott &amp; Scott wants, and I think this is very reasonable, to focus any litigation on the big players, like the big pharmacies. Third, the Mass Attorney General recently settled with Collegium, and for the whole Commonwealth, she recovered just $185,000. So, $25,000 for little Wakefield doesn't sound so bad. And finally, it should be borne in mind that the money can be used by the town for any purpose it would go into the general fund. So, for all these reasons, I recommend that you vote to approve the settlement and to authorize the Chair to sign the settlement agreement, which is before you now.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Councillor Dombrowski.
I would just say, Madam Chair, that obviously in our executive session, for people watching at home, we had discussions, we had questions from Mr. Mullen in executive session. So, I think if we take a vote now, it's not that we haven't inquired, we've just already had our concerns and questions answered. Thank you.
And one of the questions was just, there are ongoing discussions with other parties as well, so this is not the end of our... Yeah, okay. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve the draft settlement agreement with Collegium Pharmaceuticals, Inc., to settle the town's action against that defendant in the amount of $24,758, and to authorize the Chair to sign the agreement.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion from Vice Chair Butt and a second by Councillor Santos. Any additional discussion? No? So, we can have a handle. All in favor of the settlement and the motion as read? Opposed? So, passes 7 to 0. Thank you. Okay, so we have... Yes?
Send that all around.
Oh, send.
And the motion too.
I think it's all here. Yep.
We'll get it up.
There you go. Done. Okay. So, maybe we'll move into public if there's anybody here. If not, we'll certainly come back. Is there anybody here for public comment? If you'd like to approach the microphone, just introduce yourself. And as a reminder, we allocate about 3 minutes. There won't necessarily be back and forth, but we invite you to share your thoughts.
Thank you very much. My name is Roger Danchais. I live in Wakefield at 100 Nahant Street, just down the street from here. I have two issues that I'd like to address and hopefully get the council to take some time to think about and decide how to move forward with. I know some of these issues may have come up in the past, but I'm here now. One is the issue of trash and recycling collection. For people living in condominiums, and I suspect apartment dwellings also, we have an issue where we pay property taxes, much like everyone else in Wakefield, but are not afforded the opportunity to have our trash and recycling collected, and we must hire a private contractor to do this for us. In our building of 20 units, that costs us an extra $4,000 a year. We have some things we certainly could do with that money. But the real issue for me, and the one I would like to focus on, or have you focus on, is the inequity of paying taxes for services that are provided to all members of the community except for those who live in condominiums. I understand that it's difficult. There are certainly some financial issues and strategic issues about how this could be handled, and I don't propose to present ideas on how to do this. But I do want the board, the Town Council, to think about it and to recognize that this is a concern for us. Second issue, also has a question of fairness, and it has to do with our water billing. Wakefield went to a tiered system a few years ago, as I recall. My understanding or thinking about it is that it would have been done to encourage conservation of water, because the more you use, the higher your rate. We currently have one pipe entering our building, and with 20 units, you can imagine that we go over that into that Tier 4 pretty quickly, which means that we are paying a substantial amount of money each quarter, more than we would if those were 20 individual units. And again, roughly, it's kind of interesting, but that would come out to about $4,000 a year, give or take. My understanding is that the billing is based on how many pipes there are and how many meters there are. We only have one. But again, we have 20 units there and 20 different families. If they were individual units living across the city, their bill would be far, far less than what it is currently. Again, I don't have any proposals on how to address this, other than to say that it's not entirely fair. And I would like the council to take it under consideration for some potential action in the near future.
Thank you very much, Souzer. Certainly, I've heard the first issue a lot, and I think it's something that we should look into. So, appreciate your thoughts on it. Anybody want to respond? I think we'll...
I was just going to ask a question through you, Madam Chair, to Mr. Mayo, that we could maybe share this feedback with the Advisory Board of Public Works, particularly as they look at the trash and recycling policy and the water rates for the next fiscal year.
It'd be interesting to know how many condos we have in town and what is the global impact of this.
And I think probably at our next meeting, they'll be back here. DPW might be back here with that article for trash. And in probably June, they'll be back with the water rates. So, it is...
Thank you very much for bringing this to our attention.
Sure. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, very thoughtful. Sherry, is there any other public comments?
Yes, we do. We have one other person. We have Michael Laverneck, 3 Stony Hill Lane.
Um, because we want to make sure that we we hear from people and that they're not surprised that we started earlier. So I'm going to move on to item number six, approval of minutes from the February fourteenth, 2022 Town Council meeting. Do I have a motion?
So, so moved.
Second.
So, motion made by Vice Chair Butt and seconded by Counselor Santos. Any discussion on the minutes of February fourteenth? No, hearing none. We can have a hand vote on this since we are all present. All those in favor of the February fourteenth minutes? All opposed? So it's a vote of seven to zero. So we're going to bounce around a little bit here. We're actually going to go to item number eleven, which is the Collegium settlement, which was a topic that was just discussed in executive session. I'm going to pass the floor to Counselor Tom Mullen to tell us what is happening with this.
Well, Madam Chair, let me just set the stage with some context. As you know, the town of Wakefield has hired the law firm of Scott &amp; Scott to represent the town as outside attorneys in litigation against a number of opioid manufacturers, distributors, and others involved in the opioid trade. And the, one of the smallest of those defendants is a company called Collegium Pharmaceuticals. It recently agreed to settle all litigation by paying a lump sum of $2.75 million with the allocation among the twenty-seven communities that are represented by Scott &amp; Scott being done by those communities and Scott &amp; Scott themselves. And the allocation was done by a damages expert retained by that firm who looked at three factors: relative population, relative harm measured by the amount of opioid sales, and litigation risk, meaning chiefly that a bonus was awarded to Springfield because Springfield volunteered to be the bellwether case, the first case to go to trial. The result of all of this figuring is that Wakefield would get a net amount of $24,758. Now Scott &amp; Scott recommends this settlement, and I do too for these reasons. First, yes, it's not a lot of money. But then Collegium's not much of a defendant. They only started selling opioids in 2016, so the damages that could be extracted from them are relatively small. Second, Scott &amp; Scott wants, and I think this is very reasonable, to focus any litigation on the big players, like the big pharmacies. Third, the Mass Attorney General recently settled with Collegium, and for the whole Commonwealth, she recovered just $185,000. So $25,000 for little Wakefield doesn't sound so bad. And finally, it should be borne in mind that the money can be used by the town for any purpose. It would go into the general fund. So for all these reasons, I recommend that you vote to approve the settlement and to authorize the chair to sign the settlement agreement, which is before you now.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments? Counselor Dombrowski?
I would just say, Madam Chair, that obviously in our executive session, for people watching at home, we had discussion, we had questions from Mr. Mullen in executive session. So I think if we take a vote now, it's not that we we haven't inquired. It's we've just already had our our concerns and questions answered. Thank you.
And and one of the the questions was just, there are ongoing discussions with other parties as well. So this is not the end of our, yeah, okay. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve the draft settlement agreement with Collegium Pharmaceuticals, Inc., to settle the town's action against that defendant in the amount of $24,758 and to authorize the chair to sign the agreement.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion from Vice Chair Butt and a second by Counselor Santos. Any additional discussion? No? So we can have a handle. All in favor of the settlement and the motion as read? Opposed? So passes seven to zero. Thank you. Okay, so we have... Yes?
Send that all around.
Oh, send.
And the motion too.
I think it's all here.
Yep.
There you go. Done. Okay, um, so maybe we will move into public if there's anybody here. If not, we'll certainly come back. Is there anybody here for public comment? If you'd like to approach the microphone, just introduce yourself. And as a reminder, we allocate about three minutes. There won't necessarily be back and forth, but we invite you to share your thoughts.
Thank you very much. My name is Roger Danchais. I live in Wakefield at 100 Nahant Street, just down the street from here. I have two issues that I'd like to address and hopefully get the council to take some time to think about and decide how to move forward with. I know some of these issues may have come up in the past, but I'm here now. One is the issue of trash and recycling collection. For people living in condominiums, and I suspect apartment dwellings also, we have an issue where we pay property taxes, much like everyone else in Wakefield, but are not afforded the opportunity to have our trash and recycling collected. And we must hire a private contractor to do this for us. In our building of twenty units, that costs us an extra $4,000 a year. We have some things we certainly could do with that money. But the real issue for me, and the one I I would like to focus on, or have you focus on, is the inequity of paying taxes for services that are provided to all members of the community except for those who live in condominiums. I understand that it's difficult. There are some certainly, some financial issues and strategic issues about how this could be handled, and I don't propose to present ideas on how to do this. But I do want the board, the Town Council, to think about it and to recognize that this is a concern for us. Second issue, also has a question of fairness also in, a question of fairness, and it has to do with our water billing. Wakefield went to a tiered system a few years ago, as I recall. My understanding or thinking about it is that it would have been done to encourage conservation of water because the more you use, the higher your rate. We currently have one pipe entering our building. And with twenty units, you can imagine that we go over that into that tier four pretty quickly, which means that we are paying a substantial amount of money each quarter, more than we would if those were twenty individual units. And again, roughly, it's kind of interesting, but that would come out to about $4,000 a year, give or take. My understanding is that it's, that the billing is based on, you know, how many pipes there are and how many meters there are. We only have one. But again, we have twenty units there and twenty different families. If they were individual units, living across the city, their bill would be far, far less than what it is currently. Again, I don't have any proposals on how to address this, other than to say that it's not entirely fair. And I would like the council to take it under consideration for some potential action in the near future.
Thank you very much, Suzer. Certainly, I've heard the first issue a lot, and I think it's something that we should look into. So appreciate your thoughts on it. Anybody want to respond? I think we'll...
I was just gonna, just ask a question through you, Madam Chair, to Mr. Mayo, that we could maybe share this feedback with the Advisory Board of Public Works.
Yes.
Particularly as they, you know, look at the trash and recycling policy and and the water, the water rates for for the next fiscal year.
It'd be interesting to know, like, how many condos we have in town and and kind of what is the the global impact of this.
And I think probably at our next meeting, they'll be back here, DPW might be back here with that article for trash. And in probably June, they'll be back with the water rates. So it is...
That's timely. Thank you very much for bringing this to our attention.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, very thoughtful. Sherri, is there any other?
Yes, we do. We have one other person. We have Michael Lavrenik, three Stony Hill Lane, and he should be able to be speaking right now.
Yes, hi there. So my name is Michael Lavrenik. I live on Stony Hill Lane. And I have about five or six different items, and I think this is just a one-way stall. Just go ahead and just, I guess, present the list of items that I have. So the items I have are specifically concerning the National Grid and their existence on Montrose. The existence has been there for a while, and the questions I have is, does anybody know what the original timeline for the Montrose project was?
So this will not be a back and forth, but we'll take notes on everything and...
That's question one.
Yep, okay, got it. Yep.
Second question is, do we know how many days that Montrose has been blocked off? Because one of the, one of the appeals of living here on Stony Hill Lane is that we have, we would have direct access to I-95 so that we can get to work, we can get to where we need to get to. So I guess I'd like to know how many days has been blocked off in the last 365 days. That's probably a good number to know. And if we don't know, I'm sure we can figure out how many days we've paid the police detail as well. That's probably a good way to do it. My next question is, who negotiates the terms of the extension on behalf of the abutters, neighbors, slash taxpayers with regards to National Grid and their extensions on Montrose? Obviously, we're taxpayers, so as taxpayers, we likely do get first right to the roads. But I'm just wondering, like, where is our participation? Are we allowed to participate, provide our feedback? Because they're there from seven to seven. Most people are trying to get to work around eight. This morning, I'm trying to get down my street, and there's two guys from the grid blocking the end of Stony Hill. They're just kind of hanging out there. And they got their own private driveway, so I'm not sure why they're hanging out at the end of Stony Hill Lane, because that's, they've got their own private driveway. Things like that occur. The next question I have is, has anyone from the grid or the Town Council visited any of the abutters and asked them how the noise is and the denial access to Montrose, how it's actually affected our quality of life? So that's, that's my next question.
Okay.
And, you know, when we look at this, it takes me ten minutes to get through downtown because I usually commute to North Reading or Wilmington. So it's ten minutes each way out and back. And if I'm back and out numerous times throughout the day, it can add up to an hour. So that's an hour of my day that is being donated to nothing or just lost. My next question is, has anyone from the grid or Town Council reached out to the abutters to discuss some type of relief? And I would say something like, you know, for example, like a tax relief, because technically, you know, we live in a higher-end or considered, well, the way that our taxes right now are assessed is, we're considered a million-dollar peaceful neighborhood, right? But the reality is, this is more like an industrial area. For the last year or two, I would almost consider us a house on like New Salem Street, where there's a lot of, you know, active activity of trucks, construction vehicles, et cetera. So I guess, you know, maybe the grid should kind of consider paying some of our taxes as if we were an industrial zone for the time that they exist on Montrose. Or if you guys have other ways to provide relief, I think, you know, if somebody decides to come out here and ask questions or engage, I think we'd be happy to understand what you guys might offer.
Okay, so, so we have your six questions, and that's all the time we allotted. But we will certainly ask our town administrator to look into these and get as much detailed information as you can. And I think we hear the message about engagement and communications.
I got one last one if I can add it.
Briefly. Yep.
So, yeah, so we've had settling. So there was, there were a couple of times where when they hit ledge on Montrose, there were actually tremors in the house. So we're getting settling. So we've got cracks in walls, our patio, it started to sell in the back as well. So, you know, it's not only noise, but it's also starting to hit the structural components of our houses.
Okay. We certainly understand why you have concerns. And Steve, I think we'll task you with making sure, and we had this last meeting as well, so I'm gonna, is there anything that you wanted to report on from the last meeting? And some of these may be new items that I understand you haven't looked into.
Yeah, some of these are new, but we did reach out. Last time, I, communication was very bad. We've got them to start back up meetings with us. I did circle back with the Tiax, who were in the last, last meeting, and there are still some things I want to work out with them. But the, trying to get them off the street as quick as we can, that's really what we're trying to do. And they've hit ledge, they're in the middle of the road. I can't move them always to one side, so it is going to be blocked off. But trying to get them out as quick as they can. They did purchase some new sort of machine that they claim is quicker and quieter. I'd love to hear from the neighborhood. That's true. I don't know. But I will check on these other things and bring it back to the council.
I have a video that I taped at seven o'clock in my backyard last week when it was like 68 degrees. And the beeping was so loud, we had to close the windows. We can't even eat dinner. I would love for one of you guys just to hang out here one day and listen to the beeping that goes for minutes at a time. It is hard for me to actually work from home at days, certain days of the week.
Yeah, I I visited Broadway when this was happening and experienced it, and I'm sure it's similar. It is grating and awful. So, okay, so, so thank you very much. We will look in, we will look into this and do what we can. And thank you for your patience and sharing that with us. Counselor Dombrowski?
I understand, Madam Chair, this isn't an item for tonight and probably, you know, should be in the future. But since Mr. Mayo, you answered a few questions, do you have a sense from them about this, you know, hitting ledge? Because I would have to imagine that that was likely to have been anticipated. And, I mean, are they saying that it came out of nowhere and they didn't know that to be the case? Like, what is the explanation you're getting from that?
Well, they've said it's worse than they thought.
Uh huh.
I mean, I didn't do the engineering, so...
No, of course, no.
That was where it was blown, it seems to me.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering if it was like, kind of like, you know, underidentified as, as an issue.
Yeah, I would say that's probably what happened.
And that's what, kind of what it feels like. It feels like it was, and so now we have extensions of time, additional noise, all those sorts of things we're hearing about, obviously. And I find it hard to believe that that wouldn't have been able to be better anticipated. It seems like it was minimized earlier on, and now we're living with the after effects. But kind of, you know, oftentimes, I know, construction projects run late, for instance.
Right.
That's what this feels like. It's like they came in, started doing things, and then, you know, then it keeps creeping, creeping, creeping time-wise. And I think we're all in agreement that it's a real inconvenience for these folks. We all, we all appreciate that and understand that. And we're hearing it a lot. So I don't want anyone to think that we're not hearing it and not positive of it, because we all hear it, I believe.
Counselor Santos?
Steve, I have a question. And I had mentioned last time that I know that the community liaison had left.
Yeah.
Do they have another one?
I, I asked that, and I really didn't get a good answer.
Okay.
So, yes. They were much better when they had, they were better, I should say.
They were better, certainly better, when they had a community liaison. And if they don't have one, then someone should act as one. But I, but it's, yeah.
The positive thing I heard, I tried to pin them down for a day when they would be off of this phase. There will be the pulling of the, of the wires when it's all done. But that's, that's, you know, two guys in a pickup truck going from manhole to manhole. They're not digging anymore. Hopefully, by the end of March, completely out of there.
Can we look, though, to, maybe it's better for, for Mr. Mullen, can we look at, you know, whatever they committed to in terms of the timeline, and whatever we've exceeded with that, having some sort of penalties in place? Because I get it. I mean, we all get it, what's going on with, you know, the inconvenience here. And if we had X date and now we're sixty days out, ninety days out, whatever, you know, there, I'm wondering what kind of recourse at this point, you know, we do have available to us on that. Because it's not fair. It's not fair to our community.
Okay, so I think this will be an item on an upcoming agenda, hopefully, quickly. Okay, so we're a bit past time for public hearing, so we're going to move to the, open the public hearing for the Town of Wakefield, Verizon, New England Cable Television License Renewal. Do I have a motion to open a public hearing?
So moved. Second.
So moved by Vice Chair Butt, seconded by...
I just asked Madam Chair to, through you to Ms. Dalton, is there, are there other individuals waiting for public participation?
No, you're all set.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jonathan. It's good you always have my back.
I just, if we didn't have to go to the hearing, I just wanted to make sure.
No, you're right.
We went back to the, anyone who's waiting.
Okay, so we have a motion to open a public hearing. We have a second. We need a roll call vote on this. So Counselor McLean.
Aye.
Counselor Dombrowski.
Aye.
Counselor Chines.
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt.
Yes.
Counselor Santos.
Yes.
And Counselor Danahue.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, so we are now in the public hearing for the Wakefield Verizon New England Cable Television License Renewal. I think that is you, Mr. Mullen.
Yeah, Madam Chair, this is the last of the three license renewals recently undertaken. You'll recall that Comcast has a license renewal that will be, will go through 2027. And RCN has its renewal. It expires 2029. Let me go over briefly the changes in the current renewal license that is before you, and then I'll try to answer any questions. First, the term of the contract is less, frankly, it's a lot less than I wanted. I was looking for a ten-year term. I wanted to lock in Verizon as much, as long as possible. Verizon will not enter into any contract of this type for longer than five years at this point. The great constraint we operate under here is that Verizon is a lot less interested in us as a customer than we are in them as a provider. And while I tried to negotiate the best deal I could for the community, as I did in connection with Comcast and RCN, the nightmare scenario is that Verizon just walks away, and we have some happy Verizon customers who wonder why they don't have their provider anymore. So I think this is the best deal that we can have, but I regret that it is not as good as I had hoped it would be. The first respect in which that's true is the term of the agreement, five rather than ten years. Another point is Verizon is intent on a right of unilateral termination, specifically that Verizon has the right to terminate the renewal license beginning at the thirty-first month following the effective date, the effective date is today, upon 180 days' notice. So they'd have to give us half a year's notice. Further, if, and this is not too much of a surprise, you're probably familiar with the level playing field concept in, in cable TV. If we were to renegotiate any kind of deal with a video service provider that is more advantageous than what Verizon gets, Verizon reserves the right to renegotiate this license in the same way. The service area is defined as the entire town. And there's one exception, though, for any areas, developments, buildings, or other residential dwelling units that are not habitable, where Verizon determines in good faith that providing service is not commercially reasonable. And the PEG access channels, this is a little bit of good news. Currently, we have, as you know, three PEG access channels. This will allow the town to request, and, well, I should say, demand, one extra high-definition PEG access channel, and they would commit to get it to us within 270 days after we request it. And there is a, the PEG grant and PEG access support figures, the PEG grant, PEG is public, educational, and governmental television, would be $150,000 payable in four installments, $37,500 each. And the PEG access support would remain the same at 4.5% of annual gross revenues. And a small change in the insurance requirement, the general commercial liability insurance limit is increased from $5 million to $6 million. That's good news, but we are giving up the excess or umbrella coverage. So those are the major changes in the agreement. I'll be happy to try to, and the reason for them, I'll be tried, happy to try to answer any questions. But I remind you that this is a public hearing, and so your council is obliged to listen to any member of the public who wishes to comment.
Well, first, we'll hear from the counselors, and then we'll invite the public to comment and ask questions as well. Counselor Chines?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to say I have some concerns about us being broadcast in high definition. I think that's something that those of us in the council should all be a little bit concerned about.
It makes me want to keep the mask.
We'll lift the mask mandate for everything but the studio. No, in all seriousness, Mr. Mullen, thanks for the, the update and for the work you've put into this. You know, this is certainly, I'm sure, not an easy thing to negotiate, particularly given the dynamics that you mentioned in terms of, you know, Verizon's desire to serve the community. I did just have a question in terms of, do we have a sense of, of how the terms that we've negotiated compare to other communities in the area in terms of the PEG access grant amount, the types of services provided, and so forth?
Yes, generally. I don't think I could give, cite you chapter and verse, but I can tell you that generally, this agreement is as good as what Verizon is giving anybody now. That doesn't mean that it's as good as what they were giving communities five years ago.
Of course, yeah.
Okay. But it's, it's becoming, again, an environment that's increasingly not so great for towns and one where Verizon has stronger market power, because they're less interested.
Great, thank you.
I'm happy I switched to Comcast. It makes me feel much better about that.
And do we think they're not interested because we are a three-cable town?
Well, I think in part, it's the fact that fracturing the market does result in a, a smaller total for any player. But no, I think it's more a matter of changing technology.
Yeah.
I think they worry, worried may be the wrong word. They, they look ahead two, three, five years from now, and they see a vastly different market.
Yeah, I would agree. That makes sense. Counselor Dombrowski?
I'm just wondering where the cable advisory board plays a role in any of this, or if they do, or if we need to rethink, you know, those appointments? Because it, Mr. Mullen, it's something, these are basically contract negotiations that you, you've been engaged in. And so I'm not, I'm just not sure, you know, where their place is, and if they have a place, you know, what, you know, what their thinking is on this.
Well, I can tell you what I've done in negotiating all three of these license renewals, and that is to try to work with WCAT as probably the most interested party. And they were very ably represented by Council Bill Solomon, who is really experienced in this field, and I want to thank him for his participation. And, and it helps, I think, that the, that Verizon here was represented by a Wakefield resident, John Harrington, who is a former moderator for the Town of Wakefield. And, you know, obviously, John had a client to serve. But I feel comfortable in saying that, to the extent he was at liberty to err on the side of the customer, he did so here. As for, as for going to the committee, no, I didn't, I did not.
I'm just wondering, you're like, what, what, thinking about going forward, what that, what that role is defined as, and if it's, if it's a committee that we should still be having, and if we should, how we should utilize it so that it's...
Yeah, and this has come up, this has come up in the past as well.
Yeah, because I don't, I don't, I kind of don't know what else they would be doing, you know? And it's, it's nothing against the committee. It's just like, you know, what, the, the nature of these negotiations now. And I think Mr. Mullen is obviously quite capable at doing that. But then where, where does that leave, you know, a committee presence? And so I think we maybe should think about that, just as the reporting authority.
Counselor McLean?
Mr. Mullen, you indicated that there was a pickup in insurance, but also a downside. Was it on, on umbrella coverage? Is that what you said, indicated?
Yes, so there's no longer a requirement of umbrella coverage, but the general commercial liability is increased from five... but the general commercial liability is increased from $5 to $6 million.
Did that net out as a cost wash out, or how, you know, was that...
Again, we're, we're dealing with what Verizon is demanding of all of its communities that it is entering into renewals with.
Right. It's sounding like an adhesion contract. We don't have a lot of leverage, it sounds like.
Well, you know, we have only three of these contracts. Verizon has, you know, thousands. And so the, the powerful argument that anyone in Attorney Harrington's position is, is that, hey, here are my marching orders. I can give you the best deal I'm allowed, but let me show you the last five contracts I've negotiated. You're getting as good a deal as anyone.
Right. Thank you.
So anybody, oh, Counsel Chines?
Just one, one other comment, and I think this is not directly related to this contract, but, you know, sort of tangentially related. And I, I think as we think about, you know, obviously, the fact that Verizon is looking at sort of a different market in the next five years, presumably Comcast and RCNR. And as we've talked about, just the declining rates of cable subscriptions and the impact that that has on, on WCAT, which, I mean, I view as sort of a public good that we as a community, you know, leverage a lot, certainly for these meetings and everything else that we broadcast. I, I do think that we as a council need to have a discussion at some point about how we think about the town's responsibility vis-à-vis the future of WCAT and their funding sources. I mean, I certainly hope that some of the federal legislative work that we've, we've advocated for as a council and that CAT is advocating for moves forward. But, you know, I think it's something that, you know, we also, as a community, need to think about. What's our responsibility? What's our share in assuring that this, this public good remains viable?
And there's some state legislation as well that I know WCAT is tracking. And it may be related to Counselor Dobrowski's point as well. I mean, maybe there is a role for a committee to be thinking kind of longer term in collaboration with WCAT, which does have an independent board, but I think it's treated kind of as an enterprise budget, at least right now. Anybody from the public? Did, did WCAT want to comment, please?
Thank you all very much. And...
Why don't you introduce yourselves?
Oh, sorry. Ryan Boyd, Executive Director of WCAT. And Allison Houghton, our President of our Board of Directors. So I think Mr. Counsel Mullin said it best, explained it, you know, very well. And I don't have much more to add to that. But I do want to thank him, Counselor Solomon and Harrington, as well for all the work that they've done on this, you know, I think over a year's worth of work into getting this done. So thank you very much. You know, and Counsel Chines, thank you for, for saying what you just said, too. You know, we as an organization and part of this community, we, we are deeply concerned about the future of funding for access television. And it's not us, not just us, this is nationwide. And so we're doing everything we can to help provide services to this town, and we will continue to do so. And we'll keep our head downs and get our work done. And we just, we look forward to the future and continuing this sort of conversation with you. So I just want to thank everybody involved with getting this deal done, and we'll continue on.
Thank you all for, for, you know, listening to us tonight and all of this. And, you know, as a board president, and I speak for the rest of my board, we are so proud of this five-person staff that has gone above and beyond for the past two years. They have worked overtime. They have covered a huge amount of meetings that were not covered before the pandemic. And they're bringing all of this to our community so everybody can stay transparent, see what's going on in the community, and that's, that's huge. And it's just five people that are doing this is incredible.
I think also, to me, what stands out for WCAT is that you guys have been quite nimble in being able to adapt to changing technologies in that a lot of people watching us tonight are probably watching us on Facebook Live, for instance, you know? Or, you know, pulling up content, you know, on Facebook or, you know, other, online, other places. So it's not just flipping through the channel to getting to, you know, WCAT. But I think it's a lot of different, I, I will go running and have, you know, a meeting on or something, be able to stream it as I'm running, you know, listening. I know very exciting stuff. But, but it's, it's the convenience factor, you know? And so I think the fact you're able to adapt to your 21st century, you know, technologies, and that is important because I see you guys more as like, in a way, more a production team that's able to push out content in different mediums than strictly focused on what you're, you're providing on cable access, which is obviously an important element to it, but that's not the entirety of what you guys are doing. So, so I think that's, that's important for us all to be mindful of, too. You're not dying, you're adapting.
We're trying, doing our best. And, you know, we, we just, we just want to serve this town. We want to be here for the, the community. That's, we just want to do our jobs, essentially is what it comes down to. So, thank you all.
Counselor Danahue?
Yeah, and I just have to say that it's really unfortunate that as you're growing and adapting and doing so much more than you've done, that the gross revenues that you're getting as a result from the cable companies with so many people, cord cutting is, is going down, and that's really unfortunate. So you're doing more with less.
Yeah.
And I just want to congratulate you on winning the Service Award from the Human Rights Commission for all the service you've done during the vote.
Thank you.
Good job.
That was a, that was a big honor. It was a big honor to hear that, so thank you very much. It meant a lot to us.
Okay, so is there anybody else from the public, Sherry, on, online?
I don't see anybody.
Okay. Any additional discussion? So I entertain a motion to accept the, let's see, let's get our language right here, to accept the license renewal from Wakefield Verizon New England, Inc.
So moved.
Second?
Okay. Any additional discussion?
I'll just say that, I'm sitting here, I noticed that once Counselor Chines started saying those very complimentary words, his lighting got better.
Again, I'm just hoping that'll kind of prevent us from being on HD.
Okay, so you can just take a hand vote on this. With the motion is to accept the Wakefield Verizon New England, Inc. Cable Television License Renewal. All in favor? Opposed? So seven to nothing. Sherry? And we just to close the public hearing. Have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
We'll call it, Counselor McLean?
Aye.
Counselor Dobrowski?
Aye.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Danahue?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, so the public hearing is closed. We can move on to item eight, the Bylaw Appeal Update. There is, in our packets, there is a letter from Counselor McGrail, as requested at our last meeting, reporting on the current status at 383 Water Street. Is Mr. McGrail on?
Yes, he is.
Hello?
Can you hear us, Brian?
Oh, I can.
Okay, good.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council.
Good evening.
I guess, I, I wanted to, I guess, provide an update, a status, and to kind of talk about where we go from here on this site. Mr. Olwick, my client, is on. He is dialed in, as he always has been. Just so you know, but I'm speaking on his behalf. At the last meeting of the Wakefield Town Council, which was on February 14, we informed you that we would be conducting a site visit with our volunteer experts, Joseph Surianello of Heritage Builders, who is our large machine provider and operator, and Joe Adagna of Phil House Towing, who's our towing provider related to the property at 383 Water Street. To, we, we had mentioned that we were going to do that site visit to devise a reasonable plan for the removal of the remaining unregistered motor vehicles from the property. At that meeting on February 14th, we also invited any town officials who desired to attend the site visit. And also, you asked us to come before you again tonight to report the results of the site visit along with a plan for how things would proceed moving forward. After that meeting on the 14th, our site visit took place on Thursday, February 17. At the site visit, along with our experts, Mr. Surianello and Mr. Adagna and my client, we were joined by town officials, Town Administrator Mayo, the Building Inspector, Mr. DiChristoforo, Board of Health Director Anthony Chury, Board of Health Inspector Coral Hope, Chief of Police Stephen Corey, and also Town Counselor Dobrowski participated in the site visit. During the site visit, our experts walked the property with the town officials to familiarize themselves with the terrain and the remaining vehicles that needed to be removed. Due to the difficult topography in conjunction with comprised, compromised location in size of some of the motor vehicles, it was quite evident that more than a tow truck would be needed, especially as it relates to the vehicles in the rear of the property, which are somewhat in compromised locations, in order to accomplish a safe removal. We viewed the properties, I should say, the vehicles in front of the property. And it was agreed at the site visit that House Towing would try to access and immediately remove the remaining vehicles in front of the house, hopefully without the help of any heavy equipment from Mr. Surianello. A lot of them were, were kind of consumed by mud, frozen in the ground, but we decided that we would try to give that a shot without the necessary heavy machinery from Mr. Surianello. I'm happy to report that House Towing was successful in that regard. And without any assistance from Mr. Surianello, four of the vehicles were removed from the front of the property last week in advance of the snowstorm. So they've been taken off the site. It was determined, however, as we expected, that Mr. Surianello would need to bring in a piece of heavy equipment in the form of a significant-sized excavator in order to access and retrieve the remaining vehicles situated toward the rear of the property. So the plan moving forward is for that excavator to work, to get those vehicles out from the side and the backs of the property to the front. I'm happy to report that Mr. Surianello's excavator was delivered to the property this morning. And as soon as the snow melts and enough thawing occurs, we will proceed with his machine to get those vehicles from the rear and sides of the property to bring them out front where they can be staged for removal, either by House Towing or a salvage company that might take them. So that machine is now on site and ready to, ready to go once the weather permits. We are going to be delayed a little bit, to some extent, because of the storm on Friday. In the freezing temperatures that we're facing this week, some of the vehicles are frozen into the ground. I, I do want to state also that we discussed at the site visit that during the removal process from the property of the vehicles, Mr. Surianello will also be using his excavator to sort and organize other items on the property for removal. I can't stress enough the significant contribution here of Mr. Surianello and Mr. Adagna from House Towing of their time and effort. The delivery of that machine today alone was an event. This is an excavator. It's a very large machine that has to be brought on a special truck. And Mr. Surianello is not only donating the machine, but he's donating, you know, the time and effort and cost to get that machine delivered. The fuel, uses a lot of fuel, and also the operator, who is very skilled and will be operating it. And also, the, the volunteer of Mr. Adagna and House Towing and their expertise getting those vehicles out the front of the property is significant and will continue. We also, as far as I've mentioned, that Mr. Surianello will be sorting some of the other materials. And I want to stress, this, this is, in essence, not part of the order that my client is facing, but his goal, in good faith, is to clean up the property. And we talked about that on the site. So, you know, we're complying with your order to get the vehicles off, and our goal is also to go beyond that and to get a lot of the other debris off of the site. In that regard, I mentioned Mr. Surianello will be sorting. I had the opportunity last week to also meet with a recycle, metal recycling company, who has agreed that they want to take a lot of those materials, and they will provide, be providing their services to actually recycle the material. A significant amount of, amount of the material on the property will actually be recycled and put to good use. So that is the report. I think it's fairly positive. We continue to stay on track, and I think keep all promises that are made. I appreciate the town officials and Mr. Dobrowski participating in that site visit. And, you know, we, I expect, I don't expect you're going to see a lot of, I talked to Mr. Surianello today. I don't expect, the machine has been delivered, but you'll see a lot of activity out there this week with the weather and the fact that a lot of stuff is frozen and slippery. But I'm hoping that if the weather breaks towards the end of this week, that we can start some work on that next week. So that's where we are. Happy to answer any questions that any councils might have.
Thank you, Mr. McGrail. I was just looking at the weather. It sounds like it's, we're probably in for a pretty frozen week. So we'll take that into consideration as well. Any comments from the counselors? Mr. Dobrowski, you were there.
Sure. I could just say briefly that I had the opportunity to walk the site. We spent a long, long time walking around the site. It's quite a site. It, it's, it's got a grate in the back. There is a tremendous amount of material on the site. Mr. Olwick has, has amassed a considerable collection of items outside that property. And a number of the vehicles that I saw that remained were, I'll call it buried by other items or, you know, pieces of large metal or whatever the case might be. There's some extracting out that would have to occur is, is what I, what I saw. I think we really have two issues here. One is, and we've raised this before, the order relates to the unregistered vehicles only. So everyone needs to, you know, be able to recognize that there's a lot of other, I'll call it debris on that property that is not subject to the order nor under the jurisdiction of, of the council or the town. And I'm encouraging it that there are four more vehicles that, that are gone. There's still more work to be done there, certainly. And I, and I think it's really imperative that, because we've offered up so many opportunities for extensions, and we've, we've tried to accommodate as best we can, that the offset to that, you know, goodwill is the property owner also removing additional items as best as can be removed from that while he has the equipment on site. I think that's, that's a win-win for the town and for the neighbors that are budding that.
And it sounds like that is indeed...
Exactly. And I, and I spoke with Mr. McGrail about that specifically on site, about, you know, what we identified, what other items would be able to be removed as well. Because I think from the neighbor perspective, they're saying, hey, there's a lot of stuff on this, on this, on this land that I'm seeing, and I get that. That's not all going to be removed in order to be in compliance. So I want to make sure that anything that can be removed is a value add to the situation because we don't have, we don't have domain or control over that. But the other aspect of this, and I think that, you know, there's, I've heard discussion on this, certainly, is the, so we have the, the vehicle removal, which is on the land itself, but then the condition of the house itself, and how we get this gentleman back into that home. I was able to, to see him into the home, and basically, I know that our, our public health folks are doing a good job of trying to work with him on that. But we need to be able to get him back into that property without further delay at this point because right now, the, the kind of situation that he is in is untenable for the town. We can't keep doing as he's doing, as we're doing as a town. And so, you know, perhaps Mr. Mayo can speak to, you know, what options we have relative to that. I know we, we had spoken on site about perhaps bringing the voc in to do some of that work. Unfortunately, because it's a private property, they, they can't do that. But there has to be an end game here, and I, I understand whether I get that. But there are expenses that are being incurred on a daily basis by our town under this situation, and, and I don't think it's appropriate. And we need to figure out a way to resettle this gentleman into his property in a way that takes the burden off, off of the community at large, so.
Yeah, I can, Madam Chair.
Please.
So our health agent or our health, Coral was out there today. And there aren't, Mr. Olwick has done a good job of getting a lot of that stuff. And we're at a point, we can probably get him back into that house with not a lot of work, maybe a week's worth of work, just lining people up. So that's what my job is going to be for the next week, to figure that out. And I will say that I think Counselor Santos said this at the last meeting, the generosity of the people of this town are unbelievable. And I will probably be bringing some things forward to the board at our next meeting about some regular citizens and corporate citizens who are going to be extremely generous in helping this gentleman out here, and helping the town, too. So stay tuned on that. I think it's also important the town remembers that, and you guys, you, the board all knows this, Counsel Mullin knows this, that we did remove this gentleman. And under 79A, we, we have... we, we have an obligation, we have a moral obligation as well as a statutory obligation to help him out. Can't do it forever, I agree, but we're getting very, very close, and we want to make sure that there's heat, there's water.
Yes.
And electricity, and those are the three things, and I think we can have that done very shortly now.
Steve, I'm sorry, Steve, what date do, what was the date we removed Mr.?
Oh, July, I'd say July 1.
So this has been going on.
And I wish you had been there on July 1 to see the property, this is 100% better.
Is there, could you describe what is left to be done for the building to become?
Yeah, well, we had to bring in, the electrical panel needs to be set because it's not, it's not safe right now, electrical panel. We did bring running water into it or repair the running water, and then it broke, the pipe broke, so we'll have to fix that. You know, we'll have to reset the toilet and reset the sink, that will be the bare minimum. Electrical service will have to work, and that's it, that'll be a bare minimum.
Was Mr. Ulwick, was Mr. Ulwick living in the house when the?
He was living in it and also living in another site on it at the same time. He's living in there for many years.
And Mr. McGrath perhaps can answer this, how many vehicles need to be still removed from the property? Do you know?
I would say, yeah, I would say approximately 10 in the sides and the rear.
And are all of these vehicles on the primary lot by which I refer to, you know, Mr. Ulwick's home, that lot, the .4 acres?
I think, I think, Mr. McLean, most of them are, but I don't think all of them are. I think this, I think they're spread out, and I don't have a survey of the property, so I won't be exact, but I would say the majority are, but not all of them.
So some of them may be on the potentially buildable lot, the 4.4 acres, or on a different piece of property?
What buildable lot is that?
I believe there's a 4.4 acre lot in the, at this, near the, near the property at the same address that was conveyed.
Yeah, I don't know if that lot is buildable or not. It's right next to the river, there's a flood plain there, so I don't, I don't know if that is buildable or not.
I think it's classified as potentially buildable, whether it is buildable or not.
I'm not sure, I mean, is that relevant to the?
Well, I'm just wondering where the vehicles are, I don't know if it's.
Well, I mean, they're entirely on his property.
Okay.
Whichever, whichever property that might be. I think, you know, again, I don't have a, I don't know how those lots are delineated in relation to each other, they're not staked, they're not surveyed, so, you know, I think the majority of them are probably on the, on the house lot, Mr. McLean, but probably not all of them.
Now, given the amount of, you know, the fact that we do have weather conditions and so forth that you've identified, can you get, is it possible for you to give us a timeframe for when the compliance relative to the vehicles could reasonably be accomplished?
Yeah, I would, I would hope, you know, weather pending within the next 45 days. Some of the vehicles, as Mr. Dombrowski saw, are large, you know, two of them back there are dump trucks. So what's going to have to happen is that, you know, we spent a lot of time out there, as Mr. Dombrowski said, and the plan is that, that Mr. Soriano is going to have to kind of create a roadway right near the house, for lack of a better term, an access way to get back at those, and he's actually going to have to drag them out with the excavator. I asked him if his excavator was capable of doing that, and he said absolutely, he said he could pick them up if he had to. The machine that he delivered there today is a pretty significant machine, it has rubber tracks, rubber tread, and it has the ability to accomplish everything, so, but the topography, the terrain is difficult, some of the vehicles have had growth around them with, you know, smaller type trees that are going to have to be accessed to get them out. So I would say, I would hope, within the next 45 days, weather pending, I can tell you this, for Mr. Soriano to have that excavator on the site, it's not making him any money, so if anyone wants to get it done sooner rather than later, it's him, because to leave a machine of that value with a, on a site that's not working and making money doesn't work for him. So in talking to Joe today, he said he can't get out of there fast enough, so that's the incentive alone for this to move along.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Santos?
Thanks. Thank you, Brian, for that, and I think having the, the machine on there is a huge move, and I appreciate what Ed said, that the property will probably never look like perhaps what everyone wants it to look like, and that's, that's the way it is. You know, there's a lot of towns, there's a lot of houses and towns in this town that I'm sure people would like to look differently. With regard to us putting up Mr. Ulwick and appreciating that we put him out, we have a statutory duty to support him, this isn't the first time we've done this. When I was on the Board of Health, Steve, I remember we had a few homes condemned and elderly people that really resisted leaving, but we had to move them based on the condition of the house. So I think a week, thinking, looking at a week's time is completely reasonable, and, you know, and if for some reason something changes, there are other ways we can, it doesn't have to be perhaps where he still is, there's other things we can do to help him get into a safe environment until his home is done, but this is not unprecedented. This town has come to the, the help of folks that have needed it, we've done it well, I hope we continue to do it, it's the kind of town we are, but I think everything we've heard tonight certainly is promising.
Councilor Scheins?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I fully agree with Councilor Santos, I'm encouraged by this update and appreciative, Mr. McGrath, to your client and all the folks that have stepped up to help. I do want to just sort of highlight and call out Coral Hope for the work that she's put in this. I think we all know the amount of time she's spent on this issue, and as much as it's complicated to think about the debris on the property, you know, the house is a whole different issue and in some ways a much more complicated issue, and so I just want to make sure that, you know, she knows and the public knows and recognizes the work that she's done. In light of, I think, the progress that we've seen today, I'd also like to make a motion to extend the timeline of our compliance order to, to March 28th. I know that's a little bit short of the 45 days, Mr. McGrath, that you suggested, but it feels like that's the right time for a checkpoint for, for this body, and, you know, hopefully by that point, if we have to do another extension, it will be a very short-term one.
So we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
So a motion made by Councilor Scheins and seconded by Councilor Santos, discussion of the extension of 30 days. Councilor Dombrowski?
I just think it's important for us to like, to bifurcate these issues. We have the housing piece and we have the removal of debris piece. The removal of debris piece, there's a balancing of interest because we have the neighbors that are complaining about that, and I respect their concerns and they're legitimate, but it's not, that's not costing the town money. And the flip side of that, with the housing piece, has financial implications to it, so I have hesitation about an extension of another, basically another month unless we have a clear date by which this gentleman is able to be relocated back into his home so that that financial piece doesn't continue to be, you know, the town's responsibility. If Mr., if Mr. Mayo is saying, you know, it takes a week.
I'll come back in two weeks.
That's, that's what I'm inclined to do and suggest that, see where we're at with two weeks, hopefully he's resettled back into his own home, which I know is what he wants anyway, and then at that point, you know, we can then look at where we are progress-wise, but the idea of just kind of putting this out for a month, I've noticed that historically, when these meetings have come up, a lot of activity has happened just on the, you know, on the eve of or right around the time of our meetings when these reports are to be provided, so I think it's a, it's a helpful check for us going forward. There's nothing precluding us after our next meeting to then extend it out further based upon the reporting, but I don't think any of the housing, house repairs are going, are weather dependent, so that shouldn't be holding anything up.
Can I just clarify?
I think Councilor Santos had something to say, and then we'll come back to you.
You may be clarifying.
I appreciate the, I think the 3/28 for an update on simply so Attorney McGrath doesn't have to keep, you know, perhaps coming back, but 3/28 for the vehicle removals based on the weather makes sense. I don't know that I want to put a date as an end date to get him back in the house when there are so many variables. I think Steve coming back and giving us an update in two weeks, because if the house isn't ready, we cannot put him back in the house. Statutorily, we can't do that. In that time, though, can we look for other social services, other, other places that we can put him more permanently that he can, you know, assist himself in getting there too? So I don't want to put a date saying he's got to be back in the house in two weeks, but an update about what's happening, absolutely.
And, you know, I think, you know, to that point, I just want to clarify, the motion I made is specific to our extension in terms of compliance with the cease and desist order, which is related to the vehicles. I mean, there's nothing that we as a council would vote on to either put him back in the home earlier or later than, than a month from now, I mean, that's really a function of is the home habitable and does the inspectional service department make that determination? So my expectation is, and I, and I know that the team is working on this, that as soon as the home is habitable, he will move in, whether that's three weeks from now, whether that's a week from now. My motion is purely related to the time that we've allotted to Mr. Ulwick to come under compliance because of the vehicle issue, which is where we've got the, the original concern that was raised for this council.
Councilor Danny?
But I do think a good point is raised is having, is having Steve back here in two weeks is just to give us progress because we do, I mean, it's better for, it's, it's better for Mr. Ulwick too, if he can move in as quickly as possible, but there's, you know, I don't know anybody who's had work done on their house, sometimes things don't always go according to plan, and sometimes they take longer than you expect, and there's nothing that you can do about it, so I, I think the expectation of an update is, is really appropriate.
Um, Councilor, I'm going to go to Councilor McLean and then back to you, Councilor Dombrowski.
Would it be reasonable also at the two weeks, Steve, to perhaps have inspectional services present to us this status?
Yeah, that'd be fine, yeah.
Councilor Dombrowski?
The issue I have is this has really been going on for eight months now, and we have heard about delays, what was presented, the, the, at this point, you know, the town has the opportunity to basically take the property, you know, I mean, it's, the house has been condemned and it's, there are clear violations here. I recognize and respect, and I've talked to Mr. Ulwick directly, you know, that progress has been made, but this housing piece, the idea of just saying, well, we can't, you know, have him just staying elsewhere in perpetuity and have the, the town's financial responsibility related to that, and I don't, you know, I don't subscribe to the logic that because someone has allowed their property to fall into violation of code, that then there's a reward of, you know, providing alternate housing for an indefinite amount of, amount of time. I think the idea of having benchmarks, and again, if, if there's progress made and if we hear back in two weeks, you know what, they're halfway there, the electrician got tied up because of this and that, you know, couldn't happen, that's okay. The goal is not to say, oh, hey, this can't happen, but I don't like the idea of us going out for these 30-day blocks at a time, because I think what ends up happening and what has happened historically is, you know, days 26, 27, 28, 29, suddenly there's a flurry of activity leading up to like the next time that there's a check-in, so I'd like to be able to have that. It's not to say that if things aren't done within two weeks, we can't then extend out, but I think we have to have shorter periods out. Again, this has been eight months that we've been looking at this issue, and there's a financial cost to the town at present that we have to be mindful of here. And I'm, I'm not even getting into, you know, and I know, I respect what Councilor Santos was saying about some of, some of the other folks that, that we, that our town has helped in the past, I'm not even getting into financial ability here, you know, I don't know Mr. Ulwick's finances, I'm not going to suggest to know what they are, but, you know, so, but I don't think we should all assume that every person in this situation is without means to also be able to help remedy the situation, so I think the generosity of the town has been incredible, but I think we also have to be, there's still a balancing here, you know, we have, this is one, one resident, and we have to make sure he's taken care of, but we have a whole other community that we're also having to take care of as well here, so I think there's a balancing.
Okay, so we have a motion. Oh, sorry, Councilor Danny?
So I just want to say one thing, I think we do have that check and balance by having two-week check-in, again, for the, for the housing piece, and one thing I did want to thank again is that I just, I just can't thank enough Mr. Soriano and Mr. Adagna for the work that they're doing and the community that's stepping up, anxious to hear all about that. We did get a request from one of the neighbors about if it can be prioritized to the cars that are easily accessible to the road and driveway, specifically the black pickup truck on the right as you go into the property, that if those can be removed, saying that that's, that would do a lot in terms of helping the neighbors, because that's the, in the strongest view of their, of what they see, I guess.
Is that a question for me?
Yeah, is that a positive?
I think, I think, I think if the neighbor wants to contact me, I'd be happy to discuss that, I can tell you that there's a property line dispute there, and I'm concerned that if that vehicle is moved, that a fence is going to go up immediately inhibiting access to the back. So if, if, if they would agree that they won't put a fence up there until we're done, then I'd be happy to talk about the removal of that vehicle immediately.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion, and I'll just add, I think we have, I think we have two issues here, I think we have the 30 days on the cease and desist order, and, and the motion is for a 30-day extension of that, and I think, I understand they're related because they're the same person, but then we also have this, you know, housing, the reentry into the house and the house being made accessible, and the town's continuing obligation around that. So I, I feel pretty strongly that we have two issues, and so we have a motion that's clearly just on the cease and desist order for 30 days right now. Is there any more discussion around that? Okay, so hearing none, we have a motion and a second, all in favor of the 30-day extension for the cease and desist order at 383 Water Street. So that's seven to nothing. And then the, in two weeks, you will be back.
Will you be here?
You'll see.
So, but let's be clear on this, I think, so in two weeks, we will get a report.
Yes.
On the town's current, the status of the house and the town's obligation to get him back into the house and ongoing.
Sounds good.
Okay, okay. Okay, moving on to budgets. Thank you, Mr. McGrath.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath.
Thank you.
So we have item nine, fiscal year 2023 budgets. I imagine Kevin is coming on.
Yeah, Kevin's coming on, Chief Sullivan is coming on, and Deputy Chief Purcell will be joining us as well.
Very good. Do we have anybody from the Finance Committee?
I do not see anybody from the Subcommittee for the Finance Committee on.
Okay, if they appear, you can patch them through.
I will definitely, yes, I would definitely do that.
Okay, so we're going to start with budget number 17, Fire Department. Good evening, gentlemen.
Chief?
Hello?
Kevin, we'll let you lead.
Okay, I'll start off real briefly, and then I'll turn it over to Chief Sullivan. The Fire Department budget, we're recommending an increase to this budget of $270,144 over the current fiscal year. There was an increase in personal services of $265,644. We increased the overtime line item by $50,000, and the balance of it is for contractual negotiated increases. Under contractual services, we increased this portion of the budget $4,500. A couple items that we increased, the metal fire line item, we increased that $2,500, that's for mutual aid, and under the telephone line item, we increased $2,000, that is for Crusense, which is an incident reporting software. The total budget request for fiscal '23 is $6,327,332.
Thank you. Chief?
I just wanted to, I was, I guess I was just kind of opening up the questions, I, I'm not sure if there's anything else I need to say that Kevin didn't already say.
Okay, well, let's do that. And the, Councilor Santos?
Good evening, Chief and Deputy Chief Purcell. I know that, you know, something we've struggled with for the past few years has been making sure that you, your shifts are adequately filled, and I think your words in the past, Chief, and Tom, you've spoken to this as well, that you're oper, you have been operating sometimes on. you're oper, you have been operating sometimes on lesser shifts that just aren't, aren't as safe as we can be for you folks nor for for the community.
What's called is that?
Oh, well, that, oh, is that, okay, I thought someone was yelling in. You're in the Fire Department, okay. There's normal, I tell them to be quiet and put put their thing on mute. But no, let that let that go. It shows how busy you are. There's been an increase in calls, you know, you've had four thousand calls a year, and three thousand of them have been emergency medical calls, that they're just not all fire calls. And the fact that you have so many EMTs, that you you're, when you respond, it is a much different type of response than police. It is multifaceted. So I really, I appreciate that you have been fighting so hard to get the shifts back up to a place where we can be comfortable. And with with some of the building that is occurring, it's just, you know, it's a different look to go into some of these multi-level homes, so, or in apartments. So I I fully support the increase based on making sure you are as fully staffed as you need to be to be safe.
Counselor Brasky?
Good evening, everyone. I think there are also two considerations here with respect to your budget, one of them being, our population has increased, so we have more people today living in town based on the 2020 census than we did ten years ago. That inherently is going to mean that there there will be more demand for services, and I think that's partly the impact that I I talk about about when we're looking at development, this is what we're seeing, you know, with that. And also, with the pandemic, we've had people that have been home more often, so we have people that are traveling less, so inherently, we've had more, at any given time in our town, we have more bodies here, so, which means a greater propensity of of calls, you know, that are going to be placed to to the Fire Department, many medical in nature. So I think we can't lose sight of that, you know, these are, these are two factors, one of which is hope, is probably fleeting to some extent with respect to COVID, although I don't know that the work, you know, arrangement will ever be back to how it was, so I think we'll always have more people here in town at any given point. But also, we just have more bodies here because our population has gone up too, so like, I don't think we can lose sight of those two factors, which which play into these numbers as well.
Can I point out one thing?
Of course.
I don't know if this was said or not, but during the last year, probably a third of your staff, Chief, thirty percent were out with COVID or COVID-related issues.
Yeah, at one time or another, yes.
Yeah, that really took its toll, so.
Wow.
I mean, more than any other department, and you you think of the nature of their work and what they do, and it makes sense, yeah. But they've done a great job, and I think the world of the whole department, so thank you very much.
Absolutely. Counselor Chine?
Thank you. And first of all, Chief and Deputy Chief, thank you very much for for everything that you and your department do. I I think, you know, Counselor Santos mentioned the the impact certainly of the medical calls that we see, and, you know, it's, I'm mindful of the fact that if we, as we talked about, an opioid settlement agreement that we came to earlier in this meeting, and how that's changed the scope of what what your your team does over the last, you know, ten to fifteen years. It's really something that, you know, I think we're all grateful to have, for your service and your dedication for the town. I, just a couple of probably more technical questions, maybe Mr. Gill for you. The first, I did notice on the holiday line, the increase there is about forty thousand. Is that solely related to the the June nineteenth holiday that was added, or is there another factor increasing that that amount there?
No, the vast majority was the the extra holiday.
Okay. And then the other line item increase I just wanted to ask about was the EMT line. It looks like that goes up pretty significantly by about $65,000, and was wondering, Mr. Gill or Chief or Deputy Chief, if you could speak to that that piece?
Yeah, that's a largely due to a negotiated stipend increase in the contract. Of course, I forgot to write it down before the meeting started, but I believe it's paramized at an extra ten percent stipend for for having, you know, their certification. EMTs, I believe, are at nine percent, and we have a couple of first responders that for one reason or another never became EMTs, and they get an eight percent stipend. So that's that's an increase of roughly one percent per per category. And we have fifty-four people, actually, well, everybody in the department gets something, some kind of a stipend, so it does, that's the majority of it, in a nutshell.
And and that level of increase effectively is that sort of resetting the base at a higher level, and then the run rate we expect would be more of a kind of normal inflationary increase going forward?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's a, it's just a step, it's just a negotiated increase, and you're right, after that, it'll, it should level up for a few years.
Great. Thank you so much. Again, thank you, thank you both, and thank you for the entire department for everything that you do.
Thanks.
Counselor Danny?
Hi, I want to thank you all for the work that you do in keeping us all safe, and I do think that it's important, I reiterate what my colleagues have said, is I think it is important that we make sure that we do keep those staffing levels where they need to be, and especially recognizing that as this town is growing population-wise and grown quite rapidly, that we need to make sure that we are continually looking at making sure that we do have the Fire Department staffed appropriately. And I would say that it's, it's probably the one of the most important budgets to support, because, you know, you, when you need the Fire Department, you need the Fire Department, and nobody plans for, and nobody plans for an emergency, but it's, when it happens, you need to make sure that we are prepared, so. And you guys have done an amazing job, so thank you, thank you very much.
We have had a significant increase in in calls. When I took over as Chief thirteen years ago, we had twenty-seven hundred or so calls, and we're, we've just basically touched four thousand now. That's that's very significant, and that's with no corresponding increase in staffing. We haven't had an increase in staffing in the Fire Department since like the fifties or the sixties, so it's been, been quite a while.
Just to comment on that, Chief, our population hasn't grown that much, so it's interesting that the calls, so people are calling, you know, we've had development, but our population hasn't exploded from thirteen years ago from thirty years ago. So it's interesting that, you know, I think people see you out there, and they call you, and they know you can assist, you know, in in the opioid crisis, absolutely. So it's interesting to note, you know, it's it's not a straight correlation between added bodies to the town means extra calls. It was happening without that.
Yeah, well, the other thing too is we're doing a lot more simultaneous calls than we used to. It's pretty common now to get two, three, sometimes more than that, medical emergency calls in a row. And with our, with our ladder truck staff, the two people, the two engine companies would go out, get tied up at a call, and now you are, you're sending two people out, and somebody had brought up a minute ago about opioid overdoses and such, and a crew or two, it's it's pretty tough to handle a call like that with just, with just people. You really need that extra one body.
I just, I echo everything that everybody said, and and there's a lot of the little things that, you know, I think probably go unrecognized. I met with a constituent yesterday who said every time she walks by the Fire Department with her son, he gets invited in to see the fire trucks. I mean, that, that's the kind of, you know, community that we want, that that people are comfortable, and, you know, if it's if it's appropriate, you know, you share, and you and you share what you're doing. I know you were out clearing, you know, drains this weekend. I saw you in front of my house. So so I, you do so much, and we are so appreciative, and I'm just so grateful that, like, we're not here debating the Greenwood Fire Station every year like we were for so many years. So fully support this.
So do we have any, anything else? If not, we can have a motion to approve the 2023 fire budget.
So moved. Second?
Great. So motion to by Vice Chair Butt and seconded by Counselor Santos for, let me see if I can see this, six million, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars for 2023. All in favor? Unopposed? So unanimous, seven to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you both.
Thank you for your quality of time and your support. I appreciate it.
Bye, guys.
Yeah, thank you so much. We're grateful for your support of the department. Really appreciate it.
We are grateful for you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, Budget Twenty-two, Animal Inspector.
You know, Madam Chair, why don't you switch and go to Health?
Yeah, let's go to Health. Anthony, you have been very patient.
I'm very patient.
Great. Why don't you introduce yourself, and then we'll go to Kevin to kind of start the.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Anthony Choi. I am the Director of the Health and Human Services Department.
Great. Kevin, you want to walk through Health and Human Services? So this is D, Budget Twenty-six.
Yeah, I'll briefly go over and then turn it back over to Anthony. We are requesting an increase to this budget of $106,053 over the current fiscal year. This increase breaks down under Personal Services. The increase is $116,572, which includes contractual and negotiated increases. It includes an additional step upgrade, also includes three and a half new positions. If you see on page five of the budget, which lists the new positions, there is a new Chief Operating Officer position that's going to be half funded through the tax levy and half funded through APFA funds. There is a new Health Inspector position listed. Half of it is new, and half of it is reclassified from the Professional Services Line item under Contractual Services. There is a new Assistant Public Health Nurse, which is part-time. We are looking to fund that a hundred percent through APFA funds. And there's a new, a new Social Services Coordinator, which is a full-time position, which we also are looking to fully fund a hundred percent from APFA funds in fiscal twenty-three. Under Contractual Services, there is a decrease of $12,397. The two big items here, we reclassified the Health Inspector position from the Professional Services Line item and moved it over to Personal Services. And secondly, we removed the FEMA Cares reimbursement offset that we used in fiscal twenty-two for the increased hours for the Public Health Nurse. Also, we have small increases in materials and supplies, five hundred dollars. Sundry charges increased eight hundred and ninety dollars, and the mosquito control line item increased four hundred and eighty-eight dollars. The total tax levy request for fiscal twenty-three is $383,076.
Great. Oh, and welcome, Candace, Chair of the Board of Health.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Madam Chair.
So Anthony or Candace, would you like to add?
Would it be okay if Candace just says a few words?
Candace, yeah. Why don't you introduce yourself? I'm being too familiar about it.
We're neighbors. Good evening, I'm Candace Linnahan. I'm the Chair of the Board of Health, 51 Oak Street, if anyone wants to come by. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to join you, and thank you for allowing me to join on Zoom. I appreciate it. It's my pleasure to work with our Health Department, and I'm very proud of how we care for this community. As we look forward to 2023, I thought maybe I'd take a moment and review the last year. It's our second year navigating the COVID pandemic. New variants, surges in cases meant implementing additional safety measures and robust vaccine initiatives. Together with Town Council, the Health Department, and the Board of Health implemented municipal mask mandate in August, followed by a town-wide indoor mask mandate in January. These mandates were thoughtful, supported by epidemiological data. Our Health Department closely monitors COVID-19 trends in our town and beyond, and this careful attention has allowed for the Board to make prudent decisions based on accurate information. Our Board, as you know, is small in number, great in experience. We're nurses, we are moms, we are dedicated public health advocates. But beyond the Board and the Health Department staff, we are supported by our Public Health Nurse and our our school nursing team, who keep our children safe and in school. We have dedicated contact tracers who provide up-to-date education and guidance to our residents. We have a valued arsenal of tireless volunteers who work long hours at multiple vaccine clinics, where they provided nearly seven thousand COVID-19 vaccinations to children and adults. These clinics were held at various locations at different times with the goal of providing equitable access to vaccination for all of our residents. We updated our vaccination registration process to allow for smoother operations and improve sharing of vaccination information. And of course, in addition to COVID-19 vaccination, we continue to be committed to providing flu vaccine to our residents at clinics held at the farmer's market, schools, other local events. We remain vigilant in controlling the sale of tobacco to minors, monitoring food and patron safety at our eating establishments. And finally, judiciously managing our local and regional grant monies, as well as exceptional programs like Wake Up and Mass Emotion. Beyond our borders this year, we partnered with other cities and towns in requesting an independent health impact assessment be performed prior to the construction of the proposed Preger Plant in Peabody. And we continue to work closely with Melrose in many health promotion efforts. I feel our 2023 budget is logical and fair, with the modest increases reflective of the change in the cost of living and supplies, and additional staff members to support our efforts to foster pandemic recovery here in our community. And though the budget reflects our expenditures, nothing can adequately reflect the resilience and the hard work of our department. These last two years have been trying, but our Health Department has never faltered in supporting our residents with care and dignity and respect. It's the commitment of our Health Director and our Health Department staff that should be given the credit for the wellness of our community, and I'm grateful to be part of their team. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you. The very impressive summary, and a good place to to start in looking at 2023.
Yeah, that sounds good. Thank you, Candace. And I just want to say, one of the things I want to shout out is the Wakefield Board of Health. As we know, the Wakefield Board of Health, their role is really to set policy, to adopt regulations, to help enforce local and state laws, but we're very lucky to have such an experienced board that's also very involved in a lot of what we do, as well as our Town Council here. Just a, just a really great example, that was already highlighted, we had the pediatric clinic at the Galvin Middle School. We were able to get about a thousand, just over a thousand pediatric doses out there into the community as a joint effort between Wakefield and Melrose. And every step of the way, we had involvement from Town Council members, as well as the Board of Health in terms of volunteering, providing expertise in their fields. This could not be done without their help, as well as all the volunteers and our dedicated staff that spent hours kind of preparing for these events. So I think it's really great that we've been able to highlight a lot of the work that happened in 2021. This helps us kind of frame some of the budget increases that we're asking for this year. I'll kind of go over some of the categories of what we work on in the Board of, in the Health Health Department, and hopefully this will help better frame what we're talking about. So as part of, as part of our efforts in 2021, a lot of our resources were devoted to combating the COVID pandemic. As we are moving into a different stage in the pandemic, it's hard, it's, it's hard to forget the things that we faced in 2021. The Delta variant and the Omicron variant both created different, different waves for us to deal with, different policies that we had to put into place. And I think it's really important to highlight that some of the vaccination clinics that we ran were at such scale that we had made a huge impact in the community in terms of vaccination rate, vaccination being one of the strongest tools we have to protect our community. We actually were able to provide just under two thousand doses of booster shots to Wakefield and Melrose residents. Back in February and March, at the beginning of the 2021, we were able to provide just under four thousand doses of the vaccine, and we also were able to help take care of those that were homebound. And so one of the things, one of the continuing themes in our Health Department is that everybody steps, steps up and steps out of their role to make sure that we are able to serve the community. Many of our staff put in hours outside of their normal duties. The contact tracing was just one example. We had, we had a great team of contact tracers that helped us message with the community, provide education, and this is very much understated. It'll never be quantifiable in terms of how many cases we were able to prevent, just based on education and isolation and quarantine guidelines that were presented, and just general help for community members that may have been in isolation and needed other services. We were able to reach out and work with other departments to provide those services. So it was a really important part of what we were able to do for the community. And I think one of the big things that we're highlighting here is the Public Health Nursing Branch of our department. And so the COVID pandemic, obviously, many, many hours are spent doing that, but also we have to remember that outside of COVID, life keeps happening. And so we have other diseases, we have other things to keep track of, other community health measures. And so we have other diseases, we have other things to keep track of, other community health measures, such as blood pressure clinics, we have camps in the summers and the spring. A lot of these things were made possible by the, the great effort that we have from our Public Health Nurse Department. We currently, because we are a regional health department, we share a Public Health Nurse full-time with the City of Melrose. Melissa Lowery has been an amazing resource and she spends countless hours making sure that both city and town are covered in this aspect. And so moving forward, we want to make sure that we are able to expand this and keep up with the demand. And part of that is the proposal for a part-time Assistant Public Health Nurse that will work with Wakefield. This has great potential, I believe, when we move into different, different spaces here. There are yearly screening requirements for schools. There are camps that are coming up during the spring and summer. And so having this extra resource will be able to, will be, will allow us to really take on more of the duties within the town and make sure that everybody is receiving the services that we can provide. Another big one for us is the environmental health portion of it. So we currently have 141 food establishments. This year alone, we actually received 122 complaints and this was spread across food establishments, housing, trash, any of the categories that we cover within the Board of Health. I think one of the things that we want to, that we want to explain is that the Health Inspector position and the Health Inspector Department is really important. We've been able to maintain minimum statutory requirements for the town. We've been able to complete all inspections. However, we want to make sure that as we transition from the Wakefield Health Department to the Health and Human Services, we also want to encompass a food safety program more along the lines of prevention and education, working with, working with retailers, working with restaurants and food establishments to make sure that we can provide the safest environment and make sure the education is widely available. Currently, if we are able to keep up with our inspections, that is always, that is always important. But I think we have great potential if we are able to add a full-time Health Inspector along with our help from Senior Health Inspector Coral, who's been doing an amazing job covering both places. I think we'll have the potential to do much, much better in that, in that sense. And to highlight the importance of the Inspector Department, I want to kind of skip ahead here and talk about the need for a Social Services Coordinator. And so this would be a full-time position. They would work in collaboration with our current Social Services at the COA as well as the police. I think it's important because more recently, but even before, I believe before I even started, we had been seeing an increase in more complex cases, cases that require collaboration across, across different departments. You know, Social Services is always a really important piece to make sure that individuals receive the services that, you know, that they are available in the community and are able to be connected in timely fashion. And then the follow-up process is also very time-consuming and, but also very important. Our Health Inspectors and, and I'll get to our Substance Abuse Prevention Coordinator, Catherine Dingra, a little bit later, her position. But those two positions have spent many hours outside of their normal duties to connect these folks to, you know, to respond to fires, to people who are displaced. I think it's, it highlights an important fact for us that we have a need that we need to be filled. And I think with this extra resource, we'd be able to, to do that. And not to be forgotten, the work from our grants is just, just very important. I think this is one of the most built-out part of our departments. It's something that we want to maintain. The Town of Wakefield is very lucky to have the Wake Up Coalition. We are in the eighth year of our Drug-Free Communities funding. And so this coalition has kind of expanded for years and they, they participate in a lot of different programming within our community that is very important. One of the things I wanted to highlight is Parent University. I think, you know, as some of you may be familiar, I think this program has been absolutely essential in having the education piece about social media, about substance use, all of these matters and mental health, all of these things that can be explained to parents and how they can best support their students. And I think this is one of those, one of those programs that is absolutely essential to what we're doing and we want to be able to expand upon this program as well as others. We're also very involved with the schools in terms of developing health curriculum. And so we want to make sure that we continue doing this. We want to make sure that substance use prevention is something that is promoted within the schools. And we are still working against, you know, the stigma around substance use, right? This is a national issue. And I think it's no different here and we want to continue working on that moving forward. One of the things that we wanted to highlight, just based on all the work that the Youth Action Team has been able to complete, is that the driving force behind this has been Catherine Dingra, our Substance Abuse Prevention Coordinator. The proposal here is to promote her to a different position. Her new position would be the Human Services Manager as well as the Chief Operations Officer. One of the things that was behind this decision was that her skill set allows her to explore other grants, explore other programs that might be useful, and then also coordinate positions to maintain the programs that we have in place. And so we're able to expand more into the evolving landscape of social media use, really understanding how cyberbullying works. We really want to be able to expand our services beyond what we're doing right now. And I think by giving, by giving her a promotion, this, in this sense, we are able to provide more capacity for her to work on these issues while also continuing the great efforts that we have right now. The proposal to bring the second part of the title, Chief Operations Officer, one of the things our Health Department has been lacking before, at this, up to this point, has been a strategic planning, a formal strategic planning process and evaluations process. And one of the things that we want to stress is accountability. We want to make sure that we're able to show the community, you know, what, what are all the services we're offering? How much of, you know, how much benefit we are bringing to the community? And really being able to show that, you know, in a quantifiable manner. I believe that everybody who works for the Health Department has been great in this aspect. And I think the strategic planning that comes along with this, with this year will be very helpful in that sense. I believe I covered everything, so if there are any questions?
So can I just kind of ask an overarching, so is this the first time we've called this budget, right, Health and Human Services? I mean, this is really a vision for a new kind of all-encompassing health department. So, and I think you laid it out well, but I just wanted to be clear that this is really not a huge departure from what we've done, but more of a formalization, I think, and a strengthening of where we've come from. So any, I'll open it up for discussion. Counselor Chines?
Thank you. First of all, I do have a question that I want to get to, but first I do want to say how much I appreciate, I think, the vision that's expressed in this budget. I know when, I think you met with a number of us individually when you first started, you know, you talked about where you wanted to see the department go and what you saw as the emerging public health threats for a community like ours. And, you know, I see in what's proposed here a very actionable way to address some of those, those issues in the way that you've kind of reimagined the staff. So I want to highlight that and recognize just the value that that has. You know, in particular, I'm really excited about the Social Services Manager position. I think we've probably all had this experience where we've had constituents come to us with issues and we have some great resource to point them to. But your point about the issues being complex and multifactorial is spot-on. And I've often felt, you know, when I've tried to help people with some of these issues, that, you know, that, that glue, that connection between, you know, services from our Recovery Coach, services from COA has been missing. And so to have someone to fill that role and again, to be that glue, to be that coordinator of services, I think is really useful. I do have a question and this may be, you know, Mr. Gill and Mr. Mayo, more for, for you than, than for Mr. Choi or Ms. Linehan. We are using ARPA funds, or the proposal is to use ARPA funds to fund some of this. And I was wondering if you could just speak about sort of how you would see that trajectory playing out over the next couple of years. I mean, obviously, we can't use ARPA funds in perpetuity for these, for this reorganization. And so I'd love to get a sense as to how you see that sort of staging working out.
Okay, I'll, I'll take this and Kevin can jump in. I, and it's a suggestion, right? That the council can go a different way, completely. It's your budget or your approval. I like to think about phasing items into our budget. And we've done that successfully with the SAFER Grant and the Fire Department over years. We've done it successfully. Last year, we used some CARES funds to phase things in, you know, and a couple of budgets, we removed it. So I kind of look at this as we are increasing the tax levy by 106,000 anyway. And we could certainly go and increase it more, okay? But I think that, that a portion of these ARPA funds, although we're getting less than 10 million and we can do basically whatever we want, you know, and within reason. I think using a portion of this to phase this into the budget, it kind of softens a little bit on the tax levy. And I think it's a nice way to move these things in. But, and that's my thoughts going in and I, I think I shared that with the Board before, so that's how I would look at it. You've got to remember next year that we're going to say, all right, we're not going to use as much. We're going to use, you know, ratchet that down by a half or 40% and do it in that way.
So I guess that's the question I had is, so the, the idea would be?
Be next year, fiscal year 24, we would use, you know, increase the tax levy portion of that.
Got it. So you'd have almost like a three-year process where it's, again, I can't remember the exact dollar amount, but call it 140,000 dollars in year one, 70 in year two.
Year two and then, yeah, exactly.
Okay, great. I do think that makes sense. I mean, I, I think it is in keeping with, you know, one of the uses of ARPA funds and, and certainly does help sort of, from a budget planning standpoint, kind of move this in.
Kind of softens it a little bit.
But yeah, I just, you know, my, my biggest concern is obviously making sure we've got a plan to kind of build it back into our standard operating budget so that we're not holding the bag after three years.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you. And thank you again, Mr. Choi, for, for everything that you've put together here.
Thank you.
Counselor Nebraska?
First off, I want to say thank you to all the work that the Health Department has done. I recognize all that you've identified in the last two years. I mean, it's for everything from the vaccinations to the boosters to the masks to, I get that. I understand that. And I, and I fully respect and appreciate that contract, contact tracing. My concern is we are left holding the bag in a few years' time. I don't, this, and I think this is the first time this has come up. I don't like the idea of introducing ARPA funds for recurring expenses in a budget. And I think that's exactly what this is. What you're talking about, and I respect, you know, Director Choi, what you, what you've said is you're, you're talking about building out a team. You want a more robust Health and Human Services Department. I respect that. But it also means that when you look at, you know, year over year, we're talking about, about a 170% increase in Personal Services and a total budget increase of almost 40% of this. This is not, this is not during a transitional period only. That doesn't also, the full-time positions you mentioned also add benefits to that, so, you know, add another 30% on top of those numbers. I, and I, with respect to Catherine Dingra, I think she's phenomenal. I agree with you. The idea of promoting her, that makes a lot of sense. She has grant opportunities that are out there for her so that will offset her costs. You know, I, I recognize that. But this notion that we're softening the eventual, eventual walk, you know, year over year to then losing ARPA funds, it's kind of like walking the plank. It's like, it's all good. But then ARPA funds get cut off and then we are left holding the bag. We have to find other sources and we, we say the tax levy. What the tax levy means is we're taking tax dollars from somewhere else or we're having to generate more tax dollars in order to meet, to, to fill the hole that is created by the absence of the ARPA funds. So I think on a broader level, I see the ARPA funds more as, you know, one-shot hits, places where we can use it and have an impact. If you said, you know what, I think post-pandemic, we're going to have some social, emotional supports that are needed. So we're going to try to create a position that is maybe the next two years, because we know that it's, it's a transition period, people transitioning out of the pandemic. I can, I can be on board with that. I can agree, yeah. We try to bulk up Health and Human Services, you know, as people are, you know, I'll say re-entering, you know, a, a new normal, if you will. But the, but the notion of using these funds that are really, I don't think intended to be directed towards recurring budgetary, you know, line items every year after year after year, when the funds are finite, we only have them for, for a short period of time. And if we create all these positions, it's great, but then we have to figure out how to fund them. And that's going to be an issue. And I know the school will come here and they'll give us reasons why they need better educational supports, they need social, emotional support, all these things. They'll come here and they'll be able to make their case too. And so then it's like, all right, well, are we going to use the ARPA funds for that? And are we just creating new positions that ultimately, you know, if, they almost become, if you will, like unfunded mandates to a certain extent, because we have these, these roles that are, that are great and we might have the money now for it. But ultimately, when, when the ARPA's money is gone, we get to find it from somewhere else. And I don't think anyone's going to be in a position to want to be cutting other budgets in order to make up this approximately 40% increase in this budget. But I also don't think that people are going to be, want to see themselves taxed more, you know, to try to, to try to make up for the shortfall. Because as it is now, we don't have a lot to give there, you know? So I have real concerns about this going forward. If this was meant to be just a short-term solution or interim measure, yes, one thing. But, you know, we're talking about creating new positions that are going to be funded, that are going to be increased, contractual obligations, as I was here about. Each year, expenses for benefits are going to keep going up each year and our money is going to come out of the picture. So I have concern about that.
Do you mind if I just jump in real quick?
Please.
And then, and see if you can go over some of it. So thank you for, thank you for your concerns. I think, I also, I also agree that there are some concerns about the funding after this. And I think that there's, you know, some of the things that we suggested, the Social Services Coordinator, the new position with Catherine, the new Health Inspector and Assistant Public Health Nurse. For some of these things, unfortunately, or, you know, so I'll kind of go over it. Right now, what we're moving into is kind of a recovery phase, right? And it's not to say that we didn't do a lot of work up to this point, but I think now the real work begins, right? We don't really know what the full scope of the work we have to do. And to really put a timeline on two to three years for recovery is going to be very difficult. I think one of the things, one of the themes coming up to this point is the Health Department in Wakefield has been amazing up to this point. But I think we've been, what's been happening is we've been meeting statutory, minimum statutory requirements. We've been doing just enough to make sure the town is safe and we are meeting those minimum requirements. However, the reason for some of these positions that we, that we suggest, all of them actually, all the positions that we suggested is that the idea is, are for these positions to be around for a long time. It's because that this need is always going to be there. And unfortunately, when we don't have these positions, we are not necessarily addressing all of them. And so I think the Social Services Coordinator, for all of these, I believe that, you know, we will keep track of all the metrics that go into it to make sure that we are, you know, keeping it around for the right reasons. We don't want to just say, you know, we're having it just to be there. We want to be able to justify why we have this person, why we have these services. So I think the important thing here to highlight is that these positions will expand our department's services and these will, these services will be essential moving forward.
Counselor Santos?
Thank you so much, Anthony. And I can speak to having been on the Board of Health for six years, nine years ago, that we, we did what we had to do statutorily. Boards of Health looked very different then. But there, there was just not the intensity with regard to mental health crisis, forget even the pandemic. You know, what social media is doing to young people and the accessibility of drugs and all of that. So I don't look at it, I appreciate what Ed's saying, but I don't look at it as us holding the bag. I think this is something that I don't have a problem with it coming from ARPA funds. And if a position isn't needed, then we reevaluate. We're not, we're not saying that this has to go on forever and ever. But I do think Wakefield was missing, well, strike that. We have such an amazing staff at the Board of Health, the, the elected members, but also on your board, that were doing things beyond their job. And now we're just putting a name and we're putting a face around it. I also think the mental health crisis, especially with young people, is not going to go away. And certainly, the pandemic has just added to that. So I think having the Social Services position is something we can do for our town that makes our town what it should be. So I do support this. And to Ed's point, I have no problem reevaluating a position. And if we think we don't need it or it can be tweaked, then we tweak it or we remove it. But I think it's really forward-thinking and we hadn't been doing that for a lot, you know, even when I was on the Board of Health, I will say, we were kind of status quo to keep things safe. It's a different time now. And I really appreciate, I, I think it's a very smart budget. Thank you.
And just one more thing, I guess, to address the kind of looming, you know, concerns about if this costs will be, you know, go to the town. I think to be true stewards of this budget, our department will also be within this timeframe, looking for funds to support this, right? So we're looking for grants, we're looking for other opportunities to support all of these positions that we're looking for. So one way to think about it is that this is almost seed money for our department to really get us going in that right direction. And then we will also be looking for, you know, non-stop between now and the end, to look for grants to really support these positions.
Counselor McLean?
Is it Mr. Choi, Dr. Choi?
Mr. Choi.
Mr. Choi, could you just describe for us a little bit the position we're talking about here, specifically the Social Services Coordinator? Is this an individual you would foresee perhaps hiring a licensed social worker or what do you foresee? And maybe you could expand a little bit on what you see that person doing in the community? Is that person going to be interacting with seniors, for example, as well as, you know, all age groups?
Sure, yes. So we didn't actually specify, we didn't specify a clinical social worker because we're looking for someone with social service background, not necessarily licensed clinical social worker. What we imagine their role to be is kind of multi-pronged. So when we have cases that come up through inspections, when there's, you know, when there's individuals that need help connecting to services, say they have, you know, issues with food insecurity or with housing insecurity, we would have this individual reach out to this, reach out to this person and then offer them, you know, several resources, meet with them, you know, regularly to make sure that there's a warm handoff between them and the next service. Because currently, we have, you know, our inspector kind of doubles as that. They will go back, they'll do the inspection, but in the meantime, they'll try and, they'll try and keep that connection going. But to have this social service worker that's dedicated to just follow up with these cases is important. I think a lot of cases do, do be, are, are identified very frequently through services like the food bank. We would imagine this individual working closely with the food bank or the library, having a presence there and having the individuals be able to reach out to them who are looking for, you know, help in certain areas. And so that's another role that we imagine them in. I believe that they'll be working closely with the schools. The Adjustment Counselors will be a great resource for them if they need to connect with students or families that are struggling in a particular area. I think this will also be an opportunity to work with them. Because we have a social worker at the COA, I believe this could be a partnership. I don't think they'd be solely working with seniors, but there, there could be some overlap there as well.
This, this is probably, Council, Attorney Mo, this is probably your easiest question of the night, but I assume that under the Treasury's regulations that this is an appropriate use of the ARPA funds.
Well, I'd have to look at it to cite you, chapter and verse, but I know that the breadth is extraordinarily broad.
Right, right. And, you know, I understand.
I'll jump in and say absolutely authorized.
Yeah, I understand.
Individually and before the final, which basically said if you're under ten million on any, you know, legitimate service that you provide.
And I understand Counselor Dobrowski's concerns because naturally, federal money may be here one day and gone tomorrow. Certainly have some familiarity with that. But I'm supportive of this. I think there are so many situations we all run into in our lives, including our, our own families, where it's the connectivity, you know, you, you know, there's all, there are all these things out there, but you don't know how to link them up. And having more people like that in the community, I think, is, is a great benefit to the community, and yes, it is a large percentage increase per se, however, it's a small budget. It's most likely we've been underfunded for many years. So I, I am supportive of this, and I thank you for everything that your group has been doing during the pandemic and beyond, and whatever it is we have coming next.
Thank you.
Counselor Choi has then faced your button, then Counselor Denny.
Thank you. Just one other point that I wanted to make. I, I think, you know, when we talk about public health and when we talk about human services, they really are disciplines focused on prevention. And I think when you think about the investments that we're making, particularly in light of the impact of the pandemic on mental health and substance abuse and all of the other issues we're seeing, that, you know, if we think they're going to be short-term issues, I think we're, we're fooling ourselves. I mean, anyone would be naive to think that these are going to be, you know, two-year issues and then they're resolved. I, I see this budget, and, and more importantly, I think the vision that you've laid out as being one that prevents us from incurring costs in other areas in the future. I mean, we just talked in the Fire Department Budget about emergency response costs and how those calls have, have gone up by almost double in a, in a very short period of time, with, as Counselor Santos mentioned, a constant population. You know, obviously, with any new position, you know, and with any department that we expand, you know, we've got to evaluate the impact that we're having. And, you know, you've built that into your plan when you talk about the strategy and when you talk about some of the role that Ms. Dingra would, would take on. But I, I think we also have to look at this as an investment in our community and in an investment in, that will help us, I think, obviate future costs and future real-life impacts to residents in this community. I, I think this is something that makes sense in terms of taking a long view of what's the right thing to do for Wakefield, both from sort of serving our residents, but also, I think, from our own fiscal situation as well. Again, this is about prevention to me, and if you fail to prevent things like substance use and behavioral health issues, they do have long-term costs to this community, and we know those costs are real.
I'm going to echo a lot of what's being said, but I also just want to thank you, Anthony, and thank the Board of Health, Candace, you and your team. It's been a long two years, and I think, I just want to remind everyone, Anthony, I think you started in June or July?
September.
September. Oh, wow. So, um, you know, I, I thank you. I think we all can say a really good hire, Steve, for you and Mayor Broder to bring in.
It was all me.
How dare I give Paul credit? Yes, all, all, all Steve. But, you know, bringing in a, a, someone who's a public health, in the public health field and kind of have this vision is something that I think we were all kind of hoping, not, you know, just this, this is the way of public health. It's the way of Health and Human Services. We've had this discussion. I do want to say, when I was elected, the first Mass Municipal Association meeting I went to, I went to a panel and Framingham talked about their social worker, and I think I ran into the hallway. And so that was five years ago. I went up to Steve and I said, we need a townwide social worker. And so I'm really glad that we are at this opportunity. Someone, I've worked in social services my entire career and, you know, I don't think public safety is always the first person that somebody should see if they need social services. And I really worry about in the community where we have a social worker at the Council on Aging, and we have guidance counselors and social workers in the school, and everyone at this table that's in between, we don't have someone to go to. And so that's always been my thought, to kind of tie in food insecurity and housing and transportation. And during pandemic, I know all of us get calls and try to do that problem-solving and to have one person that can help us do that, because it's really complicated. And I trust, Steve, you and Anthony will look for those grants for future funding. Think about creative partnerships. So is this a partnership with some of our surrounding towns that we could do as we do with Victor's positions and, you know, Anthony's positions? And then the last thing I'm just going to say is, I started talking about this five years ago, and I think ARPA funding is exactly what we were waiting for to start this. So I think that's exactly the use of what ARPA funding should be doing. And, you know, full faith that it's the right decision for this FY twenty-three budget, and as we will be back a year from now to talk about future budgets and funding.
Counselor Denny?
So thank you both for your presentations. They were excellent. So I have, I've, I have several questions for you. So first is that I've worked a lot with the Department of Public Health on doing consulting. I do like consumer insight type work. And I remember when we, when they're developing programs, they were always, the thing that always struck me is, because I was on school committee and we're always like, well, how do we get our messages out? How do we fund prevention campaigns? And they were like, how do we find pilot communities willing to, you know, engage with us? And they had all of this materials. And do you see like a need for us to be doing more work directly with the department, like, using those resources that are already available, that they're trying to get their materials out, they're trying to get their messages out, they're looking at communities to partner with? And I was just wondering if that's been explored in Wakefield?
Yeah, I think, I think it's important for us to really explore some of the resources that are already out there, some of these, you know, some of these programs that already exist that we don't necessarily need to, you know, reinvent the wheel for, right? So one of the things that is going to be a little more detailed, I think, is the Mental Health First Aid type training. So something we've, we've discussed as a department moving forward, it's an example of a program. The Mental Health First Aid Program, you know, to be totally blunt, we're never going to hire enough people within the Health Department to really, you know, work with the entire community, but our goal is to really perpetuate some of the trainings that we're receiving as a department, and we can, you know, train strategically individuals in the community to then be able to spot signs of mental health, you know, mental health needs in their, in their families as well as their networks. And so that's just one of the examples that I, I want to kind of bring up, is that, you know, for this kind of program, we're looking to build out a team that will identify opportunities and to work, you know, work with them and facilitate, just like the Wakeup Coalition has, right? The Youth, the Youth, the, um, Youth Action Team. That type of program, once it was started, it was, it only really needs guidance. It really just perpetuates itself. So I think for those kinds of programs, for example, like Mental Health First Aid, I think it's very sustainable for us to.
But there's also, there's also a lot of programs that, prevention programs that, that we could tap into that wouldn't cost us any money, that are already in place through the state, that have already been based, they're all research-based programs. They've been evaluated so that there's been, the efficacy of them works and that we'd be able to go in with absolutely no added resources. Another question I had, you said like doing an evaluation piece, quantifiable manner. Can you tell me like how you see, like, what do you mean by quantifying? How do you do that?
Yeah, so my, some of my background, I worked in epidemiology, my previous position. I also worked as a part-time evaluation specialist for the city, City of Manchester. And so what we looked at a lot were how to determine if departments, if department branches were sustainable and if they were meeting the goals that we had set out for. And so some of these, I'll, I'll use the inspections one as an example, because I think that's one of the ones that I was able to work with most closely. Some of the metrics that we put together were, you know, number of, you know, risk-based assessments. So depending on the type of institution, you know, they would fall into risk categories of one through four. We would then look at how many risk ones we were able to do over a certain period of time. Some of the metrics that we looked at were also how much time was spent at each establishment, how many critical, how many critical violations we found. But, you know, to understand these kind of basic metrics, we wanted to look one step further, right? And so we wanted to look at average time between correction of critical violations. And so this is work that, you know, is, is not going to be easily implemented from day one. It's something that we have to kind of build into it. There are lots of frameworks out there already for evaluation purposes, and several of them that I've worked with would fit well here. I think it's just a matter of, right now, because of our staffing level, we are still looking at kind of meeting that, just that minimum statutory requirement. So the, the metrics behind it may not necessarily be super insightful. But I think as we expand, I think it's our responsibility to also make sure that this evaluation continues to expand as well and make sure that we are accountable, make sure that we can keep track of everything that we are doing in the community. And if, if it shows that we, you know, aren't able to keep up, then that might necessitate more additions. If it shows that we are comfortably at a, at a certain level and we are meeting those requirements, then that, that's a good sign.
I think it's really important because this is a big ask in the budget. It's a, it's a very big increase and it's a feel-good type increase, right? Who can say no to these things? They're wonderful things that happen. But I think that we need to make sure that we're, that those metrics for all these new positions are put in place immediately. And, and, you know, that you come back next year with those metrics so that we can see the effectiveness of it. I mean, I'm supportive of these things. I believe in this and I believe that, you know, we need the prevention. I am a strong believer in prevention, that it's, you know, the worst thing is, is that you don't want to have, you know, fire and police at your house. You want to prevent that as much as you can. So I am, you know, it, it's a big ask. So I think that we need to take it seriously and just make sure that we're constantly monitoring it. And I just want to just tell a personal story in terms of why this Social Service Coordinator position, I think is so important based on recent experiences I've had with family members, both with two sets of, two sets of family members who are older, live in rural communities. One woman, my mother-in-law, lives by herself. And she's, it's, she's very frail, COPD, she has a lot of issues. And trying to get her help, she's in the hospital and they discharge her, and we're like, we live four hours away, we can't be there all the time. We go there now and just trying to figure out services. And I pretty, I have a good background in this, and I thought I could figure it out. I couldn't get phone calls. I didn't know. I was calling the wrong people. There was no coordination and then they, it was just such a just disjointed mess, first of all, that it would have been so great to have somebody like, here's a woman who's eighty years old, living by herself, who weighs ninety pounds, and there's like, they're like, sorry. And so that was really, really difficult. Also accessing, trying to find, my father-in-law on the other end is trying to sign him up for, you know, senior centers and things like that, because he, they need to do more engagement, and they're isolated. Nothing. I was amazed at both places is that they do not have active senior centers, they don't have any active programs for seniors. And I really like have grown such, I mean, I've always appreciated Wakefield and the services that we provide and who we are as a community, but seeing like that in two different communities and what, you know, what an unbelievable disservice they're doing to their people in their community and to the families who don't live close by, that they don't have family that they can rely on. It's just, it, it's, it's one of the most frustrating things, and it, it makes me think about the work that we do and how important this is. So I do support it. I just want to make sure, but I do share, it's a big ask. And is that we do monitor, that we do monitor and do effective metrics to measure the success. And then I just had one question was with the Social Service Coordinator. So the public health nurse will work part-time to cover both Wakefield and Melrose. Is that a full-time position split?
So the Assistant Public Health Nurse is actually part-time and they're only for Wakefield.
Oh, only for Wakefield, okay. Only for Wakefield. And then has, was there any discussion around the Social Service Coordinator position being split between Wakefield and Melrose?
So we actually have a position in Melrose, a Social Service Coordinator position that's also new. It actually mirrors a lot of what Wakefield does. We, so from what we've been seeing before, up to this point actually, I believe that there is enough work to go around for a full-time in both cities. I think the, up to this point, Public Health Nurse has been, you know, able to cover both, and it would be a help to have Assistant Public Health Nurse there to cover some of the programs here. But I think there is enough work between the two cities that it would, it would necessitate having to.
Okay, and we're going to be monitoring the metrics to, to see if that's the case, so. Okay, so thank you for, for everything. I think it's great that we're, you know, being, being proactive rather than reactive. And so I am supportive. I just cautiously, I'm cautious about it.
I'm, I'm just going to, I actually don't have much to add to this budget, except to say, you're going to have more people. And Steve, I think we need to be thinking about where you're housed now, that you have enough space, that it's friendly to people to come in and access you, because now you're going to have all these amazing services. And I've always kind of liked the model of kind of your, you know, Health and Human Services being an accessible area. So I know there's no, space is tight, but I would just love to think about a friendly, publicly welcoming place for you to do your work and to accept the public, so. Okay, any additional comments, commentary from anyone else?
I just want to say that I'm like very excited about this, even though I have metrics, but I think that this is super exciting.
All right, so we need a motion to accept the proposed budget of three hundred eighty-three million seventy-six dollars for the Health and Human Services. It's probably not three hundred eighty million.
Sorry, three hundred eighty-three thousand, sorry.
We're giving you everything you want. Yeah, forget it, I'm just buying you a new building. So three hundred eighty-three thousand seventy-six dollars for Health and Human Services for FY twenty-three.
So moved.
Second. Any additional discussion?
I just want to say that I'm not going to vote in support of this, and it's not because I don't think there's value to what you're talking about. But, and I, I agree that these are feel-good measures. But I don't think that it's going to feel good when we're in a different position post-ARPA funds, when we have to then try to make up these shortfalls that inherently are created. Because we, we truly are essentially creating unfunded mandates long-term with this. And with, with the benefits we're talking about, we're talking about an over forty percent increase in this budget based on temporary funding sources. And I, that, that's not sustainable from my perspective. And so while I'm voting against it, it's, it's not because I don't think the work you're doing is important, but I do think that this is just a, a step too far. I think the promotion of Catherine Dingra makes sense. I think the, the idea of a Social Services Coordinator for at least a period of time makes sense as we transition out of the pandemic. But I, I just think, I think it's, it's too big of an ask and I, and I don't want to, to see us in a few years' time wrestling with how do we fund this? I'm already hearing, you know, talking about spaces for all these new incredible folks. That's a cost. I mean, there's across the board, there are costs and. I mean, there's, across the board, there are costs and I think we need to be more deliberate about it. So for that reason, I'm not going to be supporting it, but I don't want to send a message that, that I don't support your work. Thank you.
Any additional discussion? All right. So handout, all in favor of this budget for Health and Human Services. All opposed? So vote of 6-2-1. Counsel Dombrowski voting against. Okay. Thank you both so much.
Thanks, Anthony.
Safe travels home. Thanks, Candace. Okay. So we're going to return back to the Animal Inspector Budget.
You know what? I'm gonna.
Go, yeah.
Is John Spinello still on?
Is there somebody still on? Please, yeah, we can rearrange these anyway that makes sense.
Kevin, is John Spinello on? Can't hear me.
Sherry?
Sherry?
I don't think Sherry can hear us.
Wonder if she muted.
Can Sherry hear us? If she's muted, she can still hear us, though.
No.
No.
Kevin, can we go to General Insurance? He looks frozen. Kevin, video has locked up.
Ryan, can I hear us?
Yeah.
All right. While he's trying to fix that out, I guess we will go to, because they want, they want to bring John Spinello up, I believe is on. So let me go to Budget 22, I'm sorry, which is Animal Inspector.
No, Sherry can't hear us.
Sherry, can you hear us?
No, I just texted her. She can't hear us. So Ryan needs to help us.
Oh, now they can't.
We're back.
We're back, okay.
Now. Don't know what happened.
You missed all that great stuff.
We did.
Can you bring?
We sat over.
Can you bring John Spinello up? Is he still on?
Um, yeah.
Thank you. He's General Insurance. He'll be General in workers' comp.
He's coming over. You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can.
Thank you. I'll see you later.
I think before John jumps on, this might be John's 40th budget season in front of the town council. I think we were trying to count that the other night, right?
Thank you.
And he's done a great job. Kevin?
First, John Spinello's here tonight. John helps us out with the next two budgets, the General Insurance budget and the Workers' Comp budget. First budget up is the General Insurance. We're recommending that this budget be increased $38,706 over the current fiscal year. This increase breaks down $36,141 to the tax levy portion of the budget, $1,445 to the water division, and $1,120 to the sewer division. This budget, this budget covers the town's buildings, motor vehicles, professional liability, cybersecurity. New to the budget this year, there's a million-dollar excess liability policy. Total budget request is $499,131 with $459,166 coming from tax levy, $25,245 coming from the water enterprise, and $14,720 coming from the sewer enterprise. John, I'll turn it over to you for comments.
So the General Insurance budget continues to expand both in coverage and in organic growth. You know, I was explaining to the subcommittee, Finance Committee on this Thursday, that, you know, in the last six policy periods, you know, our property insurance has increased $50 million, you know, $40 million on the Galvin and then we put five on Walton and we took Doyle back out of vacant building status and brought it back into Statement of Values. In that time, we've increased our vehicles by 21 from 159 to 180. We've, and we brought in cyber liability a few years ago and we had by an excess policy, which I really didn't want to buy, still don't want it, but was an issue with the police department and Fort Devens. Most of the time, we send out our limits of liability and our certificate of insurance and it's widely accepted, especially if the vendor wants to do business with us. We get pushed back from Fort Devens that they wanted a $2 million general liability limit. The only way to reach there was for us to buy an excess policy over our general liability is the cheapest way of doing it. And so in October, we bought that for their renewal, which was December 31st. So we had to add that policy to our program. So, you know, we, we add it as we need it basis and it's a good budget. We have a lot of coverage in there and it continues to expand. A lot of our ratings is by number of firefighters, number of law enforcement, teachers, schools. So anything that expands there on the employee side will affect this budget because we do check those numbers every, every year on renewal. So I'm happy with it, so I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions on the General Insurance budget? Seems like it is a little bit.
I can't be that good.
I think we all understand kind of where the insurance market is.
I can't possibly be that good.
Okay, I'll ask a question. Why do we have to, so Fort Devens is the?
The shooting range.
Shooting range. Oh.
For the training.
So that's where they go for training?
Yeah, for training.
I wondered why, what we're doing way out there.
Licensing, yeah.
Okay, okay. See, I did have a question. Counsel, time.
Sorry, and just to confirm, if I'm looking at the letter, that the cost of that policy is only $7,500?
Well, you know, when we, when we had it rated, well, first, we talked about an umbrella policy, which is just too expensive because it goes over all of our coverages.
Yep.
So we then talked about an excess policy and I explained to the subcommittee at the time, in November, we got a quote for $2,800, which is $6,500, $7,500 annual. Then I wrote the budget right around Christmas time and the endorsement, the policy came in about $1,900, so that's probably high.
Okay.
In this particular budget, it's very difficult in, in January, February to project until July what the, the pricing is going to be. And the process is that you kind of guess at this. And then in, in sometime in April, I send in a lot of renewal information. They come back with their pricing in May and that's when Steve and I talk and we tell them how great we are and our loss ratio is good and we're loyal to the program and then they tell us what's going on nationally and we, somehow, we always seem to meet in the middle. So I think that policy is probably going to be somewhere in the $6,500 or $6,000, but to take it down now to that level, I don't think it'd be prudent because I really don't know how the whole budget's going to go until May.
No, I think that makes sense and I just asked to make the point that, I mean, that is actually a fairly insignificant piece of the overall increase. I mean, the reality is the increase is kind of what it is because the cost of insurance has gone up.
Right. I think when you think about all the catastrophes around the country and the world, you can see.
So I need a motion for the General Insurance, total of $499,131, of which $459,166 comes from the tax levy and $25,245 from water and $14,720 from sewer.
So moved.
Second. Okay. Any additional discussion? Sherry, that was moved by Vice Chair Butt and seconded by Counselor Santos. No additional discussion?
Okay.
All in favor? Opposed? Seven, zero in favor. Thank you. So we will move on then to workers' compensation.
The workers' compensation budget, we're recommending that this budget be increased $15,240 over the current fiscal year. This increase breaks down, the increase to the tax levy portion is $15,510. There is a decrease to the water division portion of $2,865. There is an increase to the sewer division of $2,646 and a decrease to the MLD portion of $51. The total budget request for fiscal '23 is $487,780 with $436,500 coming from the tax levy, $8,259 coming from the water enterprise, $8,848 coming from the sewer enterprise, and $34,173 coming from the gas and light enterprise. John, over to you.
So, so this budget has three components to it. The first is, is our payroll. Our payroll normally increases about $2 million every single year. So that is going to affect our premium. The second part is our experience, our experience modification. And I'm happy to say that our experience mod today is .99 and that's the first time it's been that with 20-plus years. Give you an example, a few years ago, three years ago, our experience was 133. That means that we're paying 33% above the state averages. Right now, we're .99, so we're 1% below the state. Our experience, the trend has been more than I expected and it's fantastic. As a matter of fact, this year to date, we have about $60,000 in losses and considering the winter we have, because we have a lot of slip and falls, that's outstanding. So we have to go back three years for our experience rating and we're going to be dropping off next year. It used to be historically a good year for us, but we're going to drop off the worst year we have and replace it with this year. So I don't want to wish my next 11 months away until the experience rating comes out next January. However, I'm excited about it because I think that, you know, without payroll, I mean, we could see, you know, a .9 mod, .90, which would be really phenomenal for us. So, and the last part is the state rates. Every two years, they change their rates and they're changing it in this July, on July 1st. You know, with 18 classifications, 16 went up, but four really hit hard and unfortunately was on the tax levy side as I have in my, my cover letter. That's really not much we can do about that. Because of our experience, I asked the company for a 5% credit. I asked them last year when we had debit mods. I knew they wouldn't give it to us, but I figured I'd ask anyway. There's no until you ask. So this year, I asked for 5%. No, and I wouldn't get 5% off the annual premium. So they said, well, we'll give you three. And that was a couple of weeks ago, so this is the second time I've done this budget. Last August, they declared a $1 million dividend. You know, there's 172 members in this group, this self-insured group. There's 26 charter members, we are one of those and we were the first one into the program in 1991. And we're also the largest member that they have. So I was excited about what the dividend might be and they had a conference in Woburn in November, so I thought I was going to be picking up a check or at least no one was going to be. But they, they kind of made it convoluted to the Division of Insurance as to how they were going to spend that money. They wanted to do it in form of a premium credit to some of the newer members and maybe give some dividend to the members that were here that left. And my response to that was, well, they get none and none, you know, it should just go to people, customers that have been here the longest. And, and I, as soon as I got home, I rifled off my usual email to Steve, my frustration on that. So, but they did tell us that they would have some explanation to us in January in time for the budget. They did not. They said that at the board meeting for them in February, they would have more answers for us and my request for the 3%, 5%, they would bring to the board. So they came back to us and gave us 3% and said that on the 14th, when I talked to them on email, they said they would have it in two weeks, what the dividend or the premium credit is going to be. Well, today is two weeks and I still haven't heard, so I'm hoping to have it by FinCom on Thursday night, but if it's, I'd rather just have the dividend and, you know, give the check and spend it any way we want to, or you want to. But if it's premium credit and dividend, then this budget will change once again. But either way, it's good news for the good guys, I guess, here, in one way or the other. So very, very happy with this budget. A few years ago, it was almost $600,000 and, you know, we're down, you know, into the mid-fours, so happy to answer any question on that or injuries or anything else.
Yeah, I was going to say in fiscal year 2000, combined with the enterprise funds, it was $585,000. And this year, it's $487,000. And that's a lot of work that John's done, a lot of work that the supervisors, the employees have done, being more careful, things like that, training. So it makes a difference and I think next year, we're going to be even better if we keep going, right, John?
Absolutely. And I hope so. There's nothing better than to come forward to all the boards and have a decreased budget. It hasn't been like that for a while.
Counsel, time.
Thank you. Just ask sort of a structural question around how, how we have coverage. Mr. Spinello, you mentioned we're, we're sort of self-insured. It sounded like through kind of a larger group. Could you speak a little bit more about that?
American Mutual had coverage for, for many years for the town. They were at the head of the lake and they felt that being in town, that they should have that. But they went defunct, as we know, and then Travelers took it over and it was in the pool because we had a teacher who died while working. So I remember back in, in 1991, looking at this self-insured group through my Standard Magazine, thinking I'm probably nuts to do this, but they, they had their own rates. They would take a 30% off the current rates and they were given a dividend. And after five years, they gave us a $100,000 check that they presented to then board Select and Back then. So whenever you go into a self-insured group, you do take some risk if it goes under. You're, you are liable for that money, but it's been a great association for us. So it is a, municipality workers' compensation isn't, not a lot of companies are running after it, right? You have 1,000 employees, a lot of them. I, I still have two high school classmates, I won't tell you the year, but two high school classmates that are still working in the off-premises exposures that could hurt in the last couple of years. Those employees tend to stay a lot longer. So there's not a lot, there's not a lot of market out there for it. But the self-insured group has been great for us. Could we go to a regular carrier like a Travelers? We could, but we wouldn't get, we really wouldn't get the specialized service that we get from them, like with loss control and the underwriting side. So yes, this is a self-insured group.
Yeah. I mean, it would feel to me like if we went to a regular carrier, I mean, obviously the risk comes out of play, but I mean, I would imagine there's a risk premium that you pay off the top that would increase our, our costs in, in year one.
This certainly is more comfort with a Travelers or a Hartford or AIG or something like that. But, you know, the, the thing about this is that the Division of Insurance or the DOI closely monitors their financials and really scrutinize it. So if there's an issue, we'll know about it well, well in advance. So that's one reason why I knew they wouldn't give us any credit last year when we had a 102 mod, because the DOI would come back and say, you know, why are you giving credit to an account that has, you know, is paying, you know, 102 in a mod? But I knew that the following year, we're going to have a, a credit mod, so I did ask them. So I think it's, now goes the underwriting and underwriting says, sure, you've been loyal, you've been great, and so they gave us 3%. So there's a flexibility that you get there that you wouldn't get with Travelers. So if that, if that answers your question or not.
That does. No, thank you very much, both for the explanation and all the work that you do to help manage this for us.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Anybody else? So we need a motion for Workman's Compensation budget, total of $487,780 with $436,500 coming from the tax levy, $8,259 from the water transfer, $8,848 from sewer, and $34,173 from late.
So moved.
Second. So by Vice Chair Butt and seconded by Counselor Santos. Any additional discussion? Saying none. All in favor? Opposed? So seven, zero. Okay. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, John.
Appreciate it. Everyone have a good night. Thank you.
You, too. Okay. So now I think we're going back to animals. I really want to do these animals. Okay. Kevin?
The Animal Inspector's budget, we are requesting level funding for fiscal '23. We have increased contractual services, $1,500 based on current year expenses. We decreased sundry charges, $1,500. We're now splitting the cost of the dog pound rental fee with writing. Total budget request is $40,600.
Okay. Any questions on the Animal Control, Animal Inspector budget? No, there's none. We need a motion for $40,600 for the 2023 Animal We need a motion for $40,600 for the 2023 Animal Inspector.
So moved.
Seconded by Vice Chair Butt, and seconded by Counselor Santos. Any additional discussion? None. All in favor? All opposed? 7-0. And finally, parking.
The parking clerk budget, I do want to point out that on the first page of the budget itself, under departmental request of fiscal '23, there was a typo in there. The amount should be $11,382. But with regards to the overall budget for fiscal '23, we are requesting a decrease to this budget of $168. The personal services increased $332 due to contractual and negotiated increases. Contractual services decreased $500. Most of these expenses are now budgeted under the police department. The total budget request for fiscal '23 is $12,782.
Okay. Any discussion on this? Counselor Danny?
I just have a question. How much do we get in tickets with revenue from our ticketing?
The revenue that we do collect, it has bounced all over the board because of COVID. In fiscal '20, we collected almost $100,000 between parking tickets and monies that we get from the Registry of Motor Vehicles. Last year, fiscal '21, it was probably half that, just under $50,000. And so far, year-to-date, we're at $26,000.
Thank you.
I just think maybe in the future, Steve, too, instead of just having it being parking, I mean, I think we need kind of enforcement around like crosswalks, people not stopping in crosswalks, and idling and things like that. I don't know whether there's a way to kind of make, this is great, this is somebody who's out there and has their eyes on the whole road.
Right. So this, these are the people that handle the ticket backend process.
So they couldn't give tickets for other things?
So they're not the ones that do that, but in the police budget with the actual parking attendants, so the, yes.
Oh, I see. I get it. I always get these two mixed up. Okay. I will save my.
But, so, we will, we can certainly do that as well.
Okay. Yeah, I just, you know, it's kind of car-centric, and I think there's a lot of things we can be doing on the street with that service. Okay. Noted. Any additional discussion? So motion for $12,782 for the parking clerk department.
So moved.
Seconded. By Vice Chair Butt, and seconded by Counselor Santos. Additional discussion? No? All in favor? Okay. 7-0. Okay. We can move on to committee updates. I'm going to actually skip to B and C and then come back to A, because I think that's going to take the most discussion. So B is just, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we're going to do a volunteer appreciation event for people who have served at committees. We're going to also invite people who have served at our clinics over the last whatever two years. So that's scheduled for 3/28, and we'll be getting details out about that. And then I just wanted to note that, is there any discussions around the volunteer appreciation? If anybody has any ideas?
Is it here at the high school?
I think we're going to do it here at the high school. This is two weeks before we actually change, we actually vote on committees, so I thought it was a good time to recognize people who have served, and some might be rolling off, and new people might be rolling on. But modeled a lot after the one we did in, what did we say it was? It was like March 19, it was like the week before, wasn't it?
3/28.
Yeah.
It was nearly a super-spreader event. We just.
It'd be nice if this bookends kind of coming out of the pandemic.
Yeah, maybe this will be the beginning of.
We did before the pandemic kind of kicked into that year.
But yeah, I mean, I'm thinking kind of a similar format, but I think we're open to ideas. And I thought it was great, the Board of Health reached out and said, can we include volunteers from the clinics? Which I thought is a great, great idea. So, yeah, that's the idea. We'll do it before this meeting here at the high school. All right? Item C, next meeting, as we try to do quarterly, we're expecting the Planning Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals, and the Conservation Commission to be here. Any discussion around that? No? Okay. And then discussion regarding the committee selection process. This is a continuation of our last meeting and how we might want to reassess how we select, particularly the Zoning Board of Appeals. In our packet, there was a memo from Counselor Dombrowski, and I will let him outline it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief, because I know we're late on time. We began the discussion last meeting about the idea of having a perhaps more robust assessment process of candidates for the Zoning Board of Appeals, given their unique position within the realm of our appointing authority. And they operate really in a quasi-adjudicatory capacity for the most part, with limited exception, when we have 40B projects, obviously, we do weigh in on those, you know, submitting letters and the like. But for the most part, they are certainly independent when there are projects before them. And the, so I put together, based upon the feedback that I received, just this one pager that breaks down, you know, the purpose behind having a special candidate interview committee and then breaking down what a committee composition could look like, having representation of the town council, presumably the town council chair or his or her designee, the ZBA chair or his or her designee. Obviously, if the ZBA chair was up for reappointment, then he or she would not be participating. And then our Community Economic Development Director as a third person. And the expectation would be that we would have a process such that each candidate would be interviewed either in person or via Zoom, so long as Zoom is still in allowable form. And these would be meetings that would be posted in accordance with our open meeting laws. It's very similar to the process that we use for appointing people to the Finance Committee, very much the same, just, you know, different, three different individuals.
Can I just ask?
Yes.
It's not an open meeting. We don't have to follow open meeting laws. We would be choosing to do that.
I was talking with Mr. Mayo.
We're setting up a committee, yeah.
Yeah, we'd be setting up a committee.
Oh, we would have to.
Yeah.
Oh, I see. We're creating a committee. Got it.
It's like a subcommittee, yeah.
Right. It's like a sub, exactly, a subcommittee.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
So with that, the thinking was that, you know, the three individuals would then submit recommendations and also input in writing to this council to review beforehand. That input would be presumably given weight, but obviously not determinative. And in addition, the process that we've adopted in recent years of the committee board or commission itself also offering its input would still be welcomed in the same way, knowing that comes via a letter from the chair to the council. But given the impact that the decisions of the ZBA in particular have on so many different factors of our community, it would seem appropriate that this additional layer of review of candidates would just help the process and ensure that we have, I think, the best, strongest candidates going forward.
I have a question. And this is utterly my fault. I had a note to reach out to the ZBA chair that I completely forgot about within the past two weeks. Do we know, has anyone, did you reach out to Dave just to bounce this off of him?
I haven't, only because the ZBA chair will change over time. And so I thought that because we're the appointing authority, it would be more appropriate for us to kind of think, just in general, you know?
Getting their input, though, I think is, and it's, again, my fault for not reaching out on my own.
Well, I mean, the thing is, they will, they'll continue to have independent input in addition to this, so this does not take the place of that. It's in addition to it, because the expectation is, their courage to still provide their thoughts and perspective on the candidates.
Counselor McRae?
Yeah, I wasn't here the last time, obviously, but as the new guy, just an idea or a thought, wouldn't the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission also make sense as part of the committee, either a chair or a designee?
We absolutely could do that. Certainly. Yeah, I think as long as we're working in odd numbers, three or five, I think would be fine. I think it would just be a matter of logistics. I know with Finance Committee, again, because of that prominent role, we have three. I think from a meeting standpoint, the other thing was try to keep it to three, but we could, we could make it five.
Right. I just, three to five doesn't.
Can I just clarify? Are you saying put representatives from those other two committees on the ZBA selection?
Correct.
Not, not do a whole separate process for those?
Correct. Correct. I was just wondering if it made sense to expand it since there's connectivity throughout here.
Yeah, I think it makes sense, as long as we're doing, again, designees, too, so that allows flexibility for it.
Right. Sure.
Counselor Chines?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Counselor Dombrowski, for writing out the proposal. I know we started talking about this last time, but it's always helpful to have something kind of concrete to look at. I just have a couple of comments, and I think maybe a suggestion for some sort of modification or kind of further work on the proposal. The first thing I do want to mention is that I think it's a little tricky to use the Finance Committee selection process as an analog here, the reason being that that selection process is actually written into Charter. And so I, there is a distinction here in terms of how that process works because of the governing documents for our community. I mean, this is different where we're talking about an appointment from town council and the process that we follow. I do have a concern that there's not enough specificity in the proposal in terms of laying out the scope of what is and is not appropriate to ask. And I think there's an important set of distinctions here that we want to be careful around for two reasons. One is, this is an adjudicatory body. I think we have to be careful not to have questions that would potentially prejudice an appointee's discussions or decisions or deliberations in the future. And so I think there are some guardrails that are appropriate to include from that perspective. The other reason why I think specificity is important is that, you know, we should be making sure that we're asking the same questions of everyone who applies, just based on a concept of fairness. And so I think that's another reason why I'd want to see some more specificity here. Finally, the other question that I want us to maybe think more about is whether this process, however it develops, and again, I'd like to see some more work done on this, whether this process would apply only to ZBA or to ZBA and Conservation Commission. And the reason for that is that while ZBA does have an adjudicatory purpose, so does Conservation Commission. And in fact, in a lot of cases, they're working on a lot of the same issues. And so when you look at the functions that both of those committees serve, you know, I think there's validity in looking at the appointment process in a consistent way across two of those boards. And so I think that's something where I'm not sure what the right answer to that is, but I do think that's something that I'd like to, you know, have this body think about a little bit more, and also maybe solicit some feedback from folks on those committees. I will say, I did hear from a member of the ZBA who had some similar concerns about the proposals that's written as I've laid out here. And so I do think there's some more conversations that we should be having, just to tighten up the proposal, to refine it, to make sure that it is achieving the intentions I think that we would all hope that it would achieve.
Well, I think, let's be clear here. With the selection of members of the Finance Committee, we don't have to hand off a predetermined list of questions. I think that, you know, there's a certain level of judgment and discretion that we're affording to people to be using appropriately. And in my experience, I've interviewed plenty of Finance Committee applicants, and in my experience, we did that. We had, we sat down, we had a series of questions to ask, where it consisted, anyone who's done an interview in the past understands that fairness dictates that you ask the same set of questions of people. So I don't, I think that it's, I think it's a bit of an overreach for us to try to overprescribe exactly how this interview process should be, because I think common sense would dictate a lot of this. As far as feedback from the committees, I think that's, I think it's fine to get that. Ultimately, though, we are the appointing authority, and I don't, I don't think we should lose sight of that fact, that what we, you know, we are looking to put the people in place that we think are best suited to, you know, advance the interests of this town. So I think that that's an important piece to it. With the Conservation Commission, I would suggest that we start with the ZBA and see how the process goes. See if we find that the input is useful and beneficial and leads to, you know, what we find to be, you know, the best candidates, and then we can always expand this. I mean, this is not something that we're limited to. Or we could begin with Conservation Commission, too. I mean, I don't have a strong preference. I just know that of all of the committees, boards, and commissions, the ZBA is one that stands out to me as being, especially of late, like, the most significant, because it had, it impacts so many aspects of life in this town. So I'm open to that. I don't think that we should be redlining this to death, though. I mean, we spoke about it last meeting, it's before us now, you know, tonight. You know, I think we've had, we've had 100-plus-page documents that we've approved in one meeting, you know, so with a master plan, so I don't, you know, we can wordsmith this if that's what the will is of this body, but I do think there's also a practicality to just moving this forward, too.
Counselor Danny?
Yeah. I think the committee setup is fine. I mean, if it's modeled after FinCom, that's fine. Would we have some kind of a criteria, like in terms of what is it, like, very broad criteria? I don't know, like, how would you say what that person should be? Like, is there any kind of criteria that we'd be using?
I think we should probably, as a body, have a dialogue about that, you know, because I think that we have to be able to, you know, perhaps better identify, you know, where the major concerns and priorities lie, you know, as we see them, and be looking for candidates, you know, who show at least an openness to understanding, you know, what the community concerns are, not coming in with a specific agenda, certainly. But yeah, I think having a dialogue amongst the seven of us would be important.
I would want to expand it. I don't feel qualified to define what a ZBA, someone sitting on a ZBA should be. I read the applications as we get them. Like, I'm smart enough that I know who's bringing something to the table, but folks who have been on the ZBA, and I know we are the appointing authority, but we're not God, all-powerful. I think they probably have, after sitting, you know, having different people on the board, after seeing how hearings do, they probably have a very, a much more articulate vision of certain things that work that I just don't feel like I have.
Well, something that comes to mind with that, I think you make a good point. I recall, I think it may have been last year, or the year prior, Dave Hatfield of the ZBA saying, you know, I feel like we could use some more direction from the council, you know, about what you're looking for. And I know Chair Smith-Galvin, you mentioned them coming next time.
Yes.
I think that'd be a good opportunity, so we have dialogue with them. All right. So this is what we're hearing, the concerns of residents. This is, and I apologize if I brought this to you, I don't mean.
It's okay. It's okay. I can hear you.
This is what we're hearing in terms of the concerns of residents. These are what we have identified as issues, you know? So that's where we're coming from. You know, what are you guys seeing? What is it, you know, where are the weaknesses, you know, of ZBA currently? Where are the holes to be filled from experience or background? You know, we don't want, you know, a bunch of the same type of person, but we all want to know, okay, in your experience, the depth and breadth of experience, what's that look like? You know, ideally, if you had your ideal ZBA. That's a good dialogue to have, and it could very well happen on the 14th, for instance.
Right.
And then from there, whomever is then, you know, doing the interviews, walks away with a good understanding. We do that each year, you know, beforehand. It's almost like a joint meeting, if you will, but they're just, you know, they're giving us the updates, and we have that dialogue. I think that's helpful. I think it's a way of getting the process, you know, like, to address your concerns, Counselor Santos, which I absolutely agree with.
Counselor.
Yeah, so I think, I think that brings up a good point, is I feel like we should just continue this conversation with the ZBA at the next meeting when they're here.
Share this with them.
Yeah, share this with them. I mean, you did bring it up at our last meeting, but, you know, we didn't get this document till Thursday as part of our packet. So I like that, like, we share it with the members of the ZBA, and as they come in front of us, have a conversation about, you know, what their needs are, what their priorities are as they interview and make their recommendations. That would be really helpful, too.
Counselor Chines?
You know, one of the things that I want to draw a distinction about, and this is, I think, an area where I think a greater level of specificity, and again, a sense of guardrails in the proposal become really important, is we've talked both about sort of the needs of the ZBA in terms of skill sets, but we've also talked about what are the wants and needs of the community. And I think those are two different things, and this is where I think we've got to be very, very careful about how we construct an interview process. I think if there is a certain skill set that comes with being a ZBA member, which certainly none of us have said on the ZBA, my guess is none of us have kind of gone through the entire set of public hearings that they entire set of public hearings that they have around a large project, you know, I think that's something that, to me, is fair game for an interview process, and we should be explicit that that's part of the expectation that, of what we would ask in that process. But I think we have to be careful when we talk about kind of the wants and needs of the community, because ultimately, that's expressed in things like the master plan that we're developing and in the housing production plan that we're developing and in the zoning bylaws that we have in place and that will presumably, you know, modify with the approval of town meeting after the master plan is completed. I think we have to be careful as the interviewing committee, however this shapes out, not to impress upon the applicants a set of priorities that don't necessarily line up with what's in those kind of guidepost documents and in some cases, those governing documents in terms of the bylaws that the ZBA applies when they look at a project. And so that's the distinction I just want to be very mindful of and very careful about. And so when I talk about guardrails in the proposal, it's that kind of thing that I just want to make sure that we're really deliberate about, so that we're not either overstepping our bounds as the appointing authority in terms of presuming a certain outcome for individual projects that will come in front of the ZBA, or kind of creating the situation where, you know, we've got a different set of priorities that are being expressed through an interview process than what's in those official documents that we'll be approving as a town over the next, you know, several months.
I think that's why the three individuals have been identified as they have. For example, when I have been on, doing finance committee interviews, the chair of the finance committee will say, you know what, we have a void here because we just lost somebody who had experience in, say, insurance or benefits, so this person might be good for that. So I see the ZBA chair or representative, or designee as doing that in the same way that the town council, you know, chair or designee comes from a different perspective. The community and economic development director has, works closely with the planning board as well, and so understands the needs of the business community, understands the needs of residents, and also, you know, is interfacing with the planning board. So I do think you have those, those individuals who are able to represent and know what each group is looking for, or each aspect is looking for.
Yeah, just to be clear, I don't have any concern about the individuals that are represented. I think it's the right people. I think, you know, Councilor McLean's suggestion of maybe opening it up to planning or conservation commission makes sense. I just, again, I just want to make sure we're very deliberate about what is appropriate to ask and what's not in a setting like this, so that we don't prejudice or influence or prejudge an outcome for, you know, a decision that will come in front of them. They are an adjudicatory board, there are legal obligations that come from that, and again, it's just an area where I just think it behooves us, and certainly, you know, I'm surrounded by a lot of attorneys in the room, I think it just behooves us to be very careful and deliberate about that.
Can you do both, though? I mean, if we appointed this committee at some point, tonight or in two weeks, could that committee then get together to determine certain questions that I would suggest we run by Tom Mullen?
Yeah, I think...
Smartest, smartest person in the room.
Yeah.
And just, because I appreciate what you say, that, you know, there are some questions that have been asked for, you know, in FinCom. You should not ask a woman if she plans to have more children. That was asked. So, you know, this was a long time ago, but that was asked. So you can't, you know, there are certain questions, certainly, now, we're not going that far, but to your point, to impact potential building projects, I think you can, you can vote for this and still have that control.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's potentially a path forward that makes sense. I would probably, to Councilor Butt's point, I would probably ask maybe for some feedback from the boards before we vote on anything. I do also want to make the distinction again, FinCom is not an adjudicatory board, so as inappropriate as that question was...
Illegal, we can call it.
They've got much more, like, much more latitude in terms of what they can talk about within a finance committee and what they can decide upon, because they're purely advisory. I mean, their role is really to advise town meeting as to what we should approve or not approve from a budget standpoint. This is different, and so, you know, it, to me, bears a different level of scrutiny around the process of how we select and how we appoint members than FinCom might.
You could argue that, but on the flip side of that, you could also argue that the way the current process is, we could have inherent biases that are just not shown by the people that we're selecting. So I think there's a flip side of that, too.
Yep. And again, I don't disagree with having an interview process. I just want to make sure that we are careful about, you know, prescribing what's appropriate and not appropriate in that process. Sorry.
Yeah, Councilor Vinnie?
Yeah, I think, I think you raise a really good point. I think that's an important point. But I have a question, since this is my first year on the board. We appoint ZBA, right? So ZBA comes in, what process do we use now?
We review the applications, just like we do with any other committee.
We review the applications, and then we make our determination. So we would continue to do that, we would still keep that ability, right?
Yeah, and we could disagree with the committee.
And we could disagree with the committee. So actually, it's just adding another piece of data for us, which is always, which I think is always appreciated, to have more data, so.
This is in addition to, it's not replacing anything.
Yeah, so we would still be able, we would still be reviewing the applications, coming to our own conclusions.
Absolutely.
Still get a letter from the chair, presumably, or the ZBA.
So it would just be a recommendation that, you know...
Exactly.
Okay. I think another piece of data, I always like data, so.
Okay, so, I mean, we do have the committees coming in front of us in two weeks. Do we want to add this to that agenda and then take a vote then? If there's any additions to the, to the procedures?
I would ask to add it to the agenda for next time and maybe as a homework assignment, and I'm certainly happy to be part of this, and maybe we can impose upon Mr. Mullen to help, just in terms of setting out, again, some basic parameters around kind of what's appropriate and not to frame out in these interviews. I think that would be helpful as well.
Councilor McLean?
I agree, it would be good to interact with boards during that time. As an agenda item, though, I wouldn't want to do a vote that night. I mean, I would want to perhaps revisit it when we're able to talk about what we've all heard.
Um, well, we could...
Unless there's some urgency in approving the committees.
Well, I mean, we could get their feedback, and then after they leave, we can talk about it amongst ourselves.
Right. I'm just, I'm just wondering if, you know, if we're going to have enough time to really digest it all at one meeting, but it's just a concern I raised.
I guess my concern is we're making a decision on ZBA...
Yeah.
Coming up here pretty quickly.
I just think we ought, let's not, like, lose the forest from the trees here. I mean, we're not talking, this is not a dramatic thing. We're adding an enhancement to a review process, you know, we're not revolutionizing things. So I appreciate the feedback, I think it's important, but I just think we can't lose perspective in kind of where this falls. If Mr. Mullen wants to weigh in on anything or basically just come up with a one pager of, hey, these are the things to shy away from when, you know, thinking about questions to be asking, I think that would probably be appropriate to be handed down, you know, each year to this subcommittee to do that. But again, I don't, I'm not trying to over-engineer this whole thing. I was just, you know, I'm just trying to move something forward that is an enhancement. But if you want to wait two weeks, we can do that, it's fine. I just, I do not want to wordsmith this.
Yeah, no, I agree. I don't mind waiting two weeks. I, I'm not sure we need another two weeks after that.
Because we can vote in two weeks.
So...
So could I ask, sort of, in those two weeks, just so that we do keep this moving along, you know, per Councilor Darmaski's suggestion, Mr. Mullen, is it possible to get kind of some, some guideposts for us to look at at that meeting or something that we should maybe take offline?
Well, I think it's two things, because I think we're talking about creating this subcommittee and who's on it. And then separate from that is, I would imagine, Mr. Mullen, you just having just like, like, hey, these are the guidelines or parameters that you should be following when interviewing. So then that just gets handed down to whomever is in the position to do the interviews. I think that's fine. I don't think we have to build everything into this document. I think that's something that's important to make sure, so everyone's prepped on it beforehand, so that they know, you know, going into it.
Sure, I'll tell you what, before the next meeting, I will get you a document that can be in your packet. It's going to be very brief, and it's just going to suggest a couple of things that you should steer clear of, which you've already touched upon, and a couple of things that, as somebody who has defended ZBA's in court, I would really want to look for in a candidate.
Excellent.
Good.
That would be wonderful.
That would be great.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay.
He's smartest man in the room.
Always.
Always. Listen to Tom.
Okay, so that will be on the next, and we'll probably set it up so that we get feedback, and then we, after we hear their presentation and we dismiss them, then we will discuss it. So hopefully, there'll be enough time to process. Okay, we already did item 11, item 12 announcements, any announcements? I'll start. March 8th is International Women's Day, and the Human Rights Commission is doing, but I think it's a, I think they're doing a virtual event. Okay, so, I did see that. I think that's all I have.
Yeah, so it's just, just to piggyback, so it's March 8th at 7:00. It will be virtual, so look for the link. The theme this year is break the bias, and the theme are immigrants and immigrant families. And so really great panel of four to five speakers to talk about that, so log in if you can.
All right. Anything else?
That's it.
That's all you want?
Yeah. And I think if you sign up tonight, it's 2:28 today, so you might still be able to get your T-shirt if you sign up for the Gator Gallup this evening.
I signed it this weekend. Yeah, the price is the same, but you get a T-shirt.
There you go.
And you have to take the T-shirt. There's no way to not take a T-shirt. Councilor Chimes?
Sure, just a couple of things. First of all, a couple of acknowledgements, just wanted to acknowledge Town Clerk Sheeran, her staff, her election workers, the Wakefield Public Schools, Police Department, and DPW for all the work that went into last week's election. I mean, it was a very simple election, but there's still a ton of work that goes into that, and as always, they did a great job. Also, just wanted to extend an acknowledgement and some congratulations to the owner of Smith's Drug, Mary Esther Fornier, who is, as many people know, retiring and selling Smith's Drug. I mean, they've been a mainstay downtown, and I know we'll all miss them, but certainly, you know, an individual that deserves, deserves a happy and healthy retirement, and so I know we all wish her the best of luck. And then finally, just a reminder, the parent university is running through the month of March. There are two speakers and two forums each of the next four Thursdays, and so folks that are interested in that, it's a great program, please log on to Wakefield Public Schools website and sign up.
Just wanted to remind everyone that March is the beginning of the White Ribbon Campaign every year. It's, it's an important month for Wakefield Alliance Against Violence, and it is a commitment that, that men make a pledge to never commit, excuse, or stay silent about sexual harassment, sexual assault, or domestic violence. And there is a short video that was produced last year that members of this body were a part of, and that will be showing again throughout the month. So if you see someone with a white ribbon, just keep that in mind, it's such an important issue for so many people. Thank you.
Councilor Vinnie? Steve?
Yeah, I had one thing, because I forgot to mention this when the same thing happened again, and I got scolded by Councilor Marine Butt, so I thought I would make sure I didn't miss it this time.
Scolded!
Oh, say yes!
What did I scold you on?
There will be a movie being filmed at the bowling alley on March 3rd, the movie Holdovers.
Yeah, I still don't understand why George Clooney is not invited to...
I know, I know, I know. We don't have George Clooney, but we will have Bart Giamatti, so probably not as good, but...
Bart Giamatti or Paul Giamatti?
Paul, Paul Giamatti, I'm sorry. Bart Giamatti is the former...
The former baseball pitcher.
Former baseball pitcher. Paul Giamatti, they're on the third filming Holdovers, and they, you may also see them around Nacella Field as a staging area, so I guess the public come on down, I guess if you want, and take a look at that, so wanted to make sure that, I don't know why we're getting on the map for these movies, which I think is interesting.
Where, where is it being?
Well, it's interesting that the bowling alley is going to be...
The bowling alley, the same place, yeah.
Again, okay, oh, great.
Yeah, it's clearly like a 1950s, a 1960s.
Yeah, I know, sorry.
I'm guessing. It's in The Simpsons, too. It's so charming.
Yeah, so I thought that was kind of fun, so.
It's very fun.
That's it.
All right. I'm just going to add, because I acknowledged WCAT, the other winners of the service awards were Jim Scott for all of his work around town, and youth council members Lauren Loy and Yana Hursag, the work they've done, so I'd acknowledge them. Okay, any matters not anticipated for the agenda? No? If none, take a motion to adjourn, and our next meeting is scheduled for March 14th.
So move.
Seconded.[1763.96]